Evening, everyone. It is now 5:30, and I would like to call the meeting to order. Will the court please call a roll?
Chairman Rassio.
Here.
Bruce Galloway.
Here.
Russ Winn.
Here.
Gary Gambrell.
Here.
Ben Hershinson.
Here.
Gerald Benson.
Here.
Linda Warthouse.
President.
Welcome. We have a quorum. Next order of business will be the invocation, and I'd ask Mr. Winn to please deliver usual nice homily.
Thank you. Let us pray together, together, please. Father, we thank you, Lord, for a beautiful day that you've given us here in southwest Florida, and we ask you, God, tonight, that you would give us the wisdom and guidance that we need, Lord, as we look at the issues that are before us, and we pray, God, for your direction. Pray all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Now, time for the Pledge of Allegiance. If we can please stand and face the flag. Mr. Gambrell, as a former member of the military, lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We are going to postpone the approval of the minutes because there were some questions with respect to the text thereof. So that will be postponed. With public comment, we will hold public comment after the presentations by the applicant and by the staff. Now, I understand that there is a significant amount of interest in this evening's hearing. Please remember, if you... No, wait a minute. Wait, 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 wait. Here's what I meant to say. There's a lot of interest in this meeting, and I would ask, please, that any comments from the public be directed on point to the issues and be expressed in a civil manner. We're trying to avoid any kind of ranker, and we want this meeting to be effective as much as we possibly can do it. The time each person will be allocated to speak will be four minutes, and we will make sure that that time is strictly enforced. Mrs. Philipek will do that. During the presentation, both by the applicant and by the staff, we would please ask you not to interrupt. You will have plenty of time to ask your questions, make your comments after the presentations. So with that in mind, thank you very much. Mr. Rooney, will you please swear the witnesses?
I'll be happy to do so. For everyone here who's in attendance, staff, the applicant, and even the members of the public, if you are planning on speaking today during the public hearing, even if you don't plan on speaking, but you feel that the moment may come to you at some point that you decide that you'd like to weigh in on the comments, I'd ask that you please raise your right hand and swear or affirm that you tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. All right. The case, and only case, is the Bonita Springs Golf Course Residential Plan Development, a request to rezone approximately 113 acres, more or less, from RS1 and RM2 to a residential plan development for a maximum of 350 dwellings pursuant to Division 34 of Chapter 4 of the City of Bonita Springs Land Development Code. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. Mike Fegan for the record with Community Development. Just going to do a quick little introduction here, then let the applicant go first. Yes, as you heard, this is a request to rezone a former golf course from conventional residential zoning to a residential plan development for a maximum of 350 dwelling This case has gone through many iterations of the plan, and you will be hearing about the history of the case and the history of those iterations of the concept plan from the applicant and from staff. The applicant has their full team here, staff has our full team here to go through our presentation. So with that, we'll start with the applicant. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Thank you. My name is Nick Castlinguida. I'm with Barron Collier Companies. I'll be very brief, just to give you a couple of opening remarks. I want to thank your staff and members of this commission for their time tonight and the amount of time staff's put into this. I've been with Barron Collier for a year, and prior to that was with Collier County and government, so I'm well aware of municipal needs and things that need to happen. And I'll let you know, this past year's been interesting. Got to spend time in a lot of the community members' homes. You know, Peter Panzeri, even Mr. Hershinson, has asked us to do extensive meetings with the public. And so being on the other side of the table has been interesting. I've learned a lot from the community that's been there. The changes that have been driven from those comments have been quite significant. Being able to sit down with our folks in Barron Collier and explain why we've made those changes has been important, and they understand that. About two-thirds of the way through the process, we were asked... City staff reached out to the city council with regard to the drainage consultant. We met with the consultant, our consultant, our engineer did over and over again, and the plan, as your staff member told you, morphed quite a bit from that. And we've addressed a lot of the concerns, almost every concern in terms of the drainage that the consultants asked for. So we're here in front of you tonight to let you know that, as a company, we really cherish the reputation we have, and we just don't do a development in one area and move on. We really take our time because our reputation means everything to us. So you'll see from the progression of the project that we've made a significant amount of changes in respect to what the community's asked for and what the consultant's asked for. So with that, I'll turn it over to Wayne Arnold, and he'll take you through the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and zoning board members. I'm Wayne Arnold. I'm a certified planner with Quidity Minor and Associates, which is a local firm here in Bonita. And we've had the privilege of doing a lot of projects with Barron Collier Companies over the years. And as Nick said, you know, they take a lot of pride in their work. They've had first-class projects that have been developed throughout southwest Florida and beyond. And so with that, I'm going to introduce our team members. We have... So Barron Collier was not only the applicant, but they have since acquired the property since we started this process. So they are the owner. You met Nick Castlinguida, who's Senior Vice President of Land Development with Barron Collier. We have Austin Howell, who's in charge of land development for Barron Collier Companies. Neil Montgomery's our land use counsel. You've met Neil before. Dan Waters, professional engineer. He's with an affiliate of Barron Collier Companies known as Peninsula Engineering. He's been working very closely with the Sing Hoffen Group, who are the engineering consultants hired by the city to evaluate the water management system. Bruce Lehman is an ecologist with Peninsula Engineering, and Norm Trebelcock with Trebelcock Consulting Engineers has been our transportation engineer, and we can answer questions as we go along that you may have with that. Give you just an overview and a summary of where we're headed with this, because it is going to be a lengthy presentation on our part. We have about 40 slides to go through and talk a lot about the drainage aspect of this and how the edge treatments are dealt with, because as you'll see in a moment, we've had a lot of outreach meetings with immediate neighbors and some of the community, and the plan's been driven a lot by that, as well as the Sing Hoffen consultants and their modeling of the regional stormwater. So I'm going to go through a general project description, which is covered largely in your staff report, but I'll give you a short overview. Talk about the planning and zoning. I'll orient you to the master plan that you're going to hear about. We're going to talk about how the master plan has evolved from the time we started, including, you know, having submitted this at 500 units, now back to 350 units because of all the larger stormwater demands that have been shown through the modeling effort by your consultant. We're going to talk about that area-wide drainage participation. We're going to talk in detail about some of those drainage improvements. We're going to talk a little bit about the deviations, because most of the deviations we've asked for are driven by your golf course conversion standards that limit the ability to deal with elevation changes on the property. We can't implement many of those drainage improvements that the consultants think are necessary without altering the land to accept stormwater onto the site. And then, of course, I'll go through briefly, after Mr. Waters does a lot of the water management discussion, and talk about how we've met the criteria in your land development code for approval of a plan development rezoning. So with that, as I mentioned, you know, we started our first neighborhood meeting before we applied back in 2020. So roll forward another year and a half, and here we are before you, and we held our last neighborhood information meeting last month. And those have been well attended, but in between, Nick and his team have also been meeting with the Bonita Golf Steering Committee that was formed, and those various meetings are shown on your screen. But all in all, we've had probably a dozen meetings with community members through this process, which, as you can imagine, this has been a... Even though it's been a defunct golf course for now, over 10 years, I think a lot of the community members thought that a golf course could be reestablished there, but I think that's obviously not in the making. And as Nick said, the city staff came along and had an opportunity for us to look at the opportunity to handle some off-site stormwater improvements, and the plan has been modified to reflect the consultants' work on that. So the location of the project, we call it the north and south piece. It's about 113 acres in total. It sits kind of in the north-central part of the City of Bonita Springs, just west of I-75 and Imperial, east of Old 41, and just north of Shangri-La. And the access points for the community will be off of Paradise Road. So this is a little closer-up version of the golf course property. You can see it's very irregularly shaped. It's separated by Paradise Road for the two parcels, and so we've created one plan development that covers both of those parcels. As I said, it's about 113 acres. The original request was for 500 units, and we dropped the request after our last meetings with staff and the Sing Hoffen Group to 350 units, because it just physically wasn't going to be possible when we also made the commitment to eliminate the multifamily dwellings from the request. So now, as it stands, and you'll see in a moment, that we have single-family and two-family only that are permitted in the entire project. No more multifamily exists. So as the staff report mentions, you have two different future land use categories, and you have two different zoning districts. The north parcel is zoned for RS1, single-family only. The south parcel is zoned RM2, which allows single-family and multifamily. Both land use categories allow for about six dwelling units per acre, and with our calculation based on the land area and the future land use categories, we could have sought approval for 615 total units. We started out at 500, we're down to 350. So that's about 3.1 dwelling units per acre. It's just about 50% of the maximum density we could seek under your comprehensive plan. Our master concept plan, obviously, this is highlighted, showing you sort of the north and south version. The greenish yellows are our north parcel. The south, of course, is the RM2 parcel, and it had no dwelling units constructed. It was entirely a standalone golf course over its lifespan. This is a little bit cleaner version of the master plan. North is to your left. So this highlights that on the access to the site... Doesn't hover well, but this... Let me orient you. This is Shangri-La Road down here. Paradise Road runs north and south through the site, and then we have two access points, one on the east side of Paradise and another south on Paradise and the southern tract. There is no access over to any of the other roads. Access is only onto Paradise. So the highlight of this plan, obviously, is the lake area. And Dan's going to show you a color version of this that highlights just how much lake area we have, but a typical project might have 15% lake area. This has closer to 25% lake area. So it's a significant amount more lake area, but that's done so we can accommodate some of the regional stormwater improvements. One of the features that you're going to hear about is sort of central to the two sites. This proposes a relocation of Maddox from going straight through to Paradise to bend it south so it could connect at a roundabout that would also go into our property. It's known as Lot 86. You'll see that referenced in various places in your report. But that does two things. It frees up some additional green space for the community. It also makes an opportunity to take care of some school bus stop opportunities, because we've heard that on Paradise, it's a very tight corridor. Some of the parents feel it's unsafe for school pickup, so we can provide a safe opportunity for schoolchildren to be picked up at that location. So there's only one small amenity area proposed. I don't know if you can see the highlight. I may grab my highlighter. This one doesn't show up very great, but the small amenity tract is proposed on the north parcel. And then another highlight of this is a large eight-foot-wide pathway that's going to follow along the west side of the lake on the southern tract, and that will then connect out to existing pathway system on Cockle Shell Road that's part of the city's pathway network. So again, we have single-family only, so the development tracks, if you can see the cul-de-sac road networks, they're, you know, a series of dead-end streets. One of the deviations that we had originally requested was to have a gated community, and staff didn't support that recommendation, and we agree with that recommendation. We can live without the gates. Because we had dead-end streets, they weren't through streets. We didn't think it was a big deal to request them. Staff just felt it was more in keeping with communities around us not to have gated access, so we've effectively withdrawn that application for that deviation. So our proposed uses, this shows you the schedule of uses, has been modified to eliminate both multifamily and townhouse product on the south parcel. So all that remains would be single-family, conventional detached, or two-family attached villas, which seem to be very popular in our market right now. So what I'd like to do is turn this over to Dan Waters with Peninsula Engineering. Dan's been working hand-in-hand with the Sing Hoffen Engineering Group, and Dan's going to talk to you a little bit about the basin study that's here, the land area it encompasses, and then how the plan has evolved to the point it is today. And then after Dan's presentation, I'm going to jump back up, and I'll try to close our presentation. So with that, I'll turn this over to Dan Waters.
Okay. Dan, I'll be all right. Oh, you want to go through this one? You want to go through this part? You can do that. Oh, I don't know what to...
Okay. All right. Sure. Well, let me just talk briefly about the progression of the project. The plans, unfortunately, they don't read that well in this light, but we started out originally laying this out, 578 units. We didn't submit that plan. We submitted one for 500 units. The plan on the bottom half of this page shows you how we could have fit 496 units. That would have been a combination of single-family to the north, single-family and multifamily to the south. But those were real plans, and the real plans did change when it became obvious the city had an interest in this regional stormwater benefit project. And again, you know, Dan, the number's around 31 acres of lakes that we have that'll be devoted to this regional stormwater system should the city move forward with that. You can see on the bottom, we have... This one starts to show the coloration of the lake areas that have started changing. We originally thought we could access off of Carnoustie Court. You can see to the north on the north parcel where I'm hovering the access. That would have been a potential access point in lieu of Lot 86, as we call it. But when you started looking at the modeling effort for Sing Hoffen, they started picking up larger lake areas where they could get long linear runs of lake area and some depth that they needed to make this system work. So the bottom line is, when we started really evaluating the drainage and when we started looking at this much closer with them, we're down to somewhere between 325, 350, all single-family. And you can see how this lake area has crept and grown significantly since the start of the project. This is the current configuration of the north and south tract. The south tract happens to be on the left, but you can see that a great portion of that has now become lake area. We have a small cul-de-sac that probably won't support 100 homes. And then on the north side, which is to the right, we pick up more home sites, but we're still hovering probably just under 350, depending on the width of the single-family lots that end up getting plowed. But again, highlighting here the significant lake areas that have been built into this project on both the north and south portions of it. The progression of the project also took place by looking at a realignment of Maddox. We've talked a lot about traffic calming. Heard a lot about traffic calming and speed. So cul-de-sacs... Oh, excuse me. Roundabouts are a good way to start calming traffic. We were able to look at an opportunity to realign Maddox to the south, align it with this roundabout, also aligning it with Lot 86, which would be the access point to the northern parcel. And then that allows for the park and potential bus stop to be located in that area that would be, if you're familiar with the site, there's the old defunct clubhouse on that parcel today. So we would wrap Maddox Street south around the clubhouse parcel, and that makes for a small parklet and potential bus stop location for... Safe for the kids. And then this is where we are today. This reflects, I think, the latest iteration from Sing Hoffen on the lake areas that they need, and you can see that the south parcel's truly dominated by lake area, and then the north parcel gets the single-family only. And again, the... One of the things that, in talking to our neighbors, they weren't real happy with the multifamily over time. So I think reducing this to single-family and two-family only addresses their concern that they would have larger buildings adjacent to them. So we think that's a good compromise and one that we're glad we could accommodate. So I'm going to let Dan jump in here and talk a lot about stormwater permitting, because it's a really key feature of the project and an important part of the project.
Which one's the pointer? That's the top one?
Yeah. Do you want a better one?
Yeah, I'll survive with this. Thanks. Thank you, Wayne. Again, my name's Dan Waters with Peninsula Engineering, professional engineer with 22 years of experience and had been accepted as an expert previously in this kind of venue. So I'm going to talk about a handful of issues. Stormwater is obviously, as you heard from Wayne, going to be an important part of it. Going to talk about what our typical roadway cross-sections internal to the community will look like. Give a little more detail on the pedestrian system that we're proposing outside of our proposed development. And then talk about what we've referred to as our edge conditions, which would be how we would handle and buffer the perimeters of this project site, particularly as they're up against the existing residential areas. That was a pretty common question in our last neighborhood information meeting, something we felt need to provide more information on. So to start out on stormwater, we did, as Wayne said, our first neighborhood information meeting was a little more than a year ago, and it really opened our eyes to the scope and the extent of problems in this area. So one of the very first things that we did was try and get our arms around what's the history of the permitting here and try and diagnose why there were the problems that there are. So this site, the golf course, was permitted in 1980, so it's a relatively old system in terms of the world of water management district permits. It was designed to accept runoff from a number of surrounding communities. I'll show you a graphic of where those are here on the next slide. And there are a lot of things that basically were... The way those things were done back in 1980 would not be done that way today, and we've learned a lot. One of those is, we'll talk here in a second, about all these adjacent communities that flow through our site. There were no easements recorded that would grant any parties the ability to come in and operate or maintain those drainage facilities within the golf course site. And basically, in a review of the permit file, right out of the onset, as this golf course was built, there were drainage problems in surrounding areas and a lot of just disputes that started right away. One of the other features and types of things that are... Want to talk about here while we're talking about the history of this, what's different between how we would do this now and how it was done and what is there currently? Couple of unique features that are worth noting. One is the discharge from the golf course site, and basically, again, I'll show you here in a second, these surrounding communities that were designed to drain into the golf course. The discharge from the golf course to Spring Creek was via a pump station. So it was a stormwater pump station that was manually intended to be operated by the golf course owner. And so that's, you know, for reasons that are very easy to imagine, not terribly reliable, and not something that an entity like the Water Management District would permit today, where you're waiting on some third party to go out and flip a switch to provide drainage relief for surrounding communities. The other thing worth noting is that the levels of flood protection have changed over the years. Currently, what we would design something like this, too, is what we would call the 25-year, three-day storm event. We would set the roads so that they would not flood in that kind of storm, which, to give you a little context, that's about 11 inches of rain in three days. The... It's not... You know, there's not a lot of great deal of calculation information in those old permit files. The best I can tell, the... These older communities were designed for either a five-year, one-day storm, which is about five and a half inches of rain in a day, or a 10-year storm, which is slightly more than that, but not what the current standard is. And so with that, what we've got here is, this is an overlay of the original permit plans for the golf course overlaid on a current aerial. So to orient you, we've got down here, Shangri-La Road on the south. North is to the right. You can see Paradise Road bisecting the two golf course properties, and then Cockle Shell Drive to the west of the southern golf course parcel. So basically, everything you see, all the neighborhoods that you see in shading here, were what was originally designed to discharge into the golf course site. And I mentioned earlier that there is an existing... It's basically in disrepair at this point, but there was a pump station located to outfall the golf course. That's located right in this area, basically the southwest corner of the southern golf course parcel. And what that stormwater pump station did was, it basically pulls water out of the existing ditches and ponds and discharges that to Spring Creek. So, you know, you can see on this plan, the areas colored in blue are the lakes that were designed as part of the golf course. And the way this whole system was supposed to work is, everything flowed out of these shaded areas into the golf course site, and again, it had to make its way down to the southwest corner to discharge into Spring Creek. And we have found that conveyance and getting flow from these adjacent communities to the outlet is one of the big problems that has to get solved in any fix of this. And so, you know, some of what we did was, when we began to understand the nature and extent of the problems, is try and diagnose, you know, why do we have these issues? Again, conveyance and getting from the outfalls of those communities to the outlet to Spring Creek is a huge part of this problem. The conveyance facilities on the golf course currently consist of a combination of a couple ways that that water can flow. One is just shallow ditches that... I don't know if I can... You can see one... An example of one of those here. These are typically at the perimeter of the golf course. The ditch I'm making reference to is right there. They're at the perimeter of the golf course, generally are, like you see in this picture here, where you've got vegetation on the edge of the golf course, between the fairways and the play areas and the ditch. There's not great access to them. On top of that, these are things that are shallow. They hold water in the summer. They receive all the nutrients from both the golf course runoff and from the lawns adjacent. And just, if you want to grow weeds, it's a fantastic place to do it, but that greatly inhibits the ability for these things to discharge, and they're very difficult to maintain. Other thing we've noted, and you can see a picture here on the right side of the screen, a lot of the conveyances within the golf course are old reinforced concrete pipe... Or, I'm sorry, old CMP, corrugated metal pipe. And so these things have reached the end of their useful life. They... You can see this one is crushed on the top, which is pretty typical. Other thing that happens with these old metal pipes, and they're going on 42 years old at this point, they begin to just rust out, and the sides of them, the top of them, basically just disintegrate. The pipes fill with dirt, and everything behind it is blocked and will not discharge. And so, you know, where... In our assessment of this, one of the things that you look at when you have very poor conveyance like this, it really shows itself in a situation like we had in 2017. If any of you that were around in 2017, obviously Hurricane Irma came in September and dumped a lot of rainfall on us, but about 10 days or two weeks before that, we had an unnamed storm system that was just called Invest 98L that also put a lot of rain on us. And so what happens in that case is, you get something like that Invest 98L, and it dumps rain on a site like this, the water levels go up. When you have conveyance, it's just... It's failed, you know? Between those ditches and these pipes, that water level never recovers to where it should be to start, and it certainly doesn't get there in a situation like this in that 10-day or two-week time period. And so when you get multiple storms, one after another, you started out with this stage, it came up. When that first storm came through, should have come all the way back down and had capacity for the next storm, in this case Hurricane Irma. But with these failed conveyances, it doesn't happen, and so you start higher at the next storm, and then you get flooding, because that next storm dumps so much water that it has nowhere to go but go vertically and spread out into the... Into the roads and potentially homes. conveyances, it doesn't happen. And so you start higher at the next storm. And then you get flooding because that next storm dumps so much water that it has nowhere to go but go vertically and spread out into the, into the roads and potentially homes. So, once we got to a place where, you know, we understood what the issues are, we got into, all right, how do we begin to work and fix this? So as Wayne mentioned, we've had a lot of meetings with the city and the city's consultant. And really, the intent here is to create a system that you're not gonna have these blockages. And so if you'll notice on, for instance, on the south golf course parcel, we've got long contiguous lake areas. Those will be dug to 12 feet below the wet season water table. So you're not gonna get weed growth in there. Nobody's gonna be able to ever go in there and fill it in, plant something in front of it. And you have a good reliable path for discharge. Also, going to replace those old pipes with larger pipes and with material that is more durable. So likely looking at primarily reinforced concrete pipe and then some amount of potentially what they call HDPE, which is a heavy-duty plastic pipe. That'll allow us to remove all the shallow ditch areas that cause issues. And provide us with, you know, the other thing with the pipe systems is, we've gotta locate them in areas where they can be maintained. Everything requires maintenance, including these pipe systems. They'll fill up with sediment. We've gotta get them in places where we can get a vacuum truck to them, vacuum them out and maintain them. So what we would do as part of this effort would be locate those pipes within drainage easements that would be dedicated to the city, locate them in public rights of way. And also, that's why Lot 86, which Wayne pointed out, is basically right there, adjacent to the roundabout, is an important location for us, because that'll be the location we can pipe the water out of Benita Golf Villas, which I know suffers from flooding issues. And then also areas on Carnoustie Court, by, through Lot 86 out to the southern golf course parcel. One of the things that we will do as part of this design is wherever from these adjacent communities runoff comes into the golf course site currently, we'll obviously accept that, take it through our system and provide a stubout. Basically, if any of the adjacent communities ever wanna make improvements or do anything to their outfall lines, they would be able to do that and tie into our proposed system. So I'm gonna real briefly talk about what the roadway cross-sections will look like. It's a 50-foot private right-of-way. These roads would be maintained by the homeowners' association, so not by the city. Have a 10-foot travel, two 10-foot travel lanes. We would paint those with what they call, or mark the pavement what they call "sheros," which is basically indicated to share the road between bicycles and vehicular traffic. Six-foot concrete sidewalk on each side of the road. And then a seven-foot landscape strip between back of curb and the sidewalk, where we would plant trees to provide shade for the sidewalk at approximately 50-foot spacings where we don't have conflicts with the water and wastewater lines that we have to put in for BSU. So they have some separation requirements that we're gonna do the best we can to get those in. But there may be some locations where BSU says, no, you're too close to the water main, you can't do it. Wayne touched on this briefly before. I'm gonna go into a little more detail on it, and it's in the master concept plan that I'm sure all of you have reviewed. This is our pedestrian plan. One of the things that we heard in that neighborhood information meeting from the residents around this area is that the experience of walking down either Paradise Road or Cockle Shell Drive is not a comfortable one. You've got five-to-six-foot sidewalks that are, in most cases, about two feet off of the edge of the pavement. There's no curb there. So there's basically nothing separating you from that vehicular traffic that's running alongside. So one of the things that we have proposed is basically to make the roundabout here at relocated Maddox and Paradise kind of the hub of our pedestrian network. We would connect to the existing sidewalks on Paradise, propose to construct six-foot sidewalks on each side of the relocated Maddox Lane. And then, as Wayne mentioned, run an eight-foot path off of the roadway system at the top of bank of the lake from Maddox down to Cockle Shell. And that would tie into a sidewalk that the city has designed and is gonna be constructing very soon on the east side of Cockle Shell that'll go down to Shangri-La. So provide some regional pedestrian connectivity without being right on the roadway. And with that eight-foot pathway, also at the request of the city staff, we'll provide shade trees every 50 feet to provide some shading of that pathway. So now, I'm gonna get into, the last part of this is gonna be what we're calling our edge conditions, or the interface between the existing homes and the proposed development. So that really consists of three things in terms of how we're gonna try and buffer and screen those two uses. The first one is, that's up here now, would be walls and fences. Also talk about landscape, or grading on these edges. That was a fairly common question at our last neighborhood information meeting, so we're gonna provide some more information on that. And then talk about just sort of the conceptual landscape plan that we have proposed. So I'm gonna start with fences and walls. I'll start on the northern parcel. And basically, what we've done is, there are some areas that we've identified that we've said, we think just due to the space that's left, fence should be required between the two uses. So on the north golf course parcel specifically, where you see that is in the locations on the east side of Carnoustie Court, where existing homes back up to the proposed homes. There's gonna be a 25-foot buffer between the existing homes and the proposed. So we think a fence or a wall in that location is appropriate. And we would say that is required. And when we're talking about fences and walls, what we're thinking at this time is, not like a chain-linked fence, we're thinking like a, basically the six-foot white vinyl fencing. So it's something that's opaque and provides screening immediately. The other location on the north parcel where we would say these would be mandatory, would be along Divot Drive, where again, we've got a 25-foot buffer. And we'll do fences and walls in there. There are other locations, specifically, you can see on the north end, on Wild Turkey Avenue, where existing homes are up against what would be proposed residences. And then also on the south property line here, on Wood Ibis, where existing residences are up against proposed, where we wanna reserve the right for the developer to put in a fence or wall. Again, the six-foot white vinyl fence, if it's necessary as we get a little further along in our project development. Moving to the south golf course parcel, the only place where we would say, basically, the six-foot white vinyl fence would be required would be here on the south end, basically at the, down by the cul-de-sac on the south end. That's through discussions with residents in Benita Pines. They had concerns with, you've got that road that runs down that way and the cul-de-sac there, headlights potentially going into their community. So we thought that was a location where it makes sense to say there would be a mandatory six-foot white vinyl fence again. And then, again, there are areas where we've got basically a 50-foot buffer from the existing property lines to the proposed property lines. Those are spots where we would like to reserve the option to do that, to install fences. But we'll, the necessity of it, we'll figure out as we get a little further along in our project development. The one thing you'll note here is, in locations where you have existing residences that will be on lakes, we are not proposing fences or walls. We don't wanna do anything to obstruct the view corridor from those existing residences to the proposed lakes. So with that, I'm gonna get into, this 'll, we'll get a little bit detail on what the grading would look like on these edge conditions. Again, this was a common question when we had our last neighborhood information meeting. So I'm gonna start with what we're calling Cross Section A that you see up here at the top. So Cross Section A is located basically in two spots for, the spots where existing homes on Carnoustie Court would back up to the proposed residences. And then also down here on Divot Drive, where the existing homes back up to, the existing residences would be backed up to the proposed residences. So we've got a 25-foot buffer proposed in those areas. We would, basically, what you can see here is, we would leave about 13 feet, and one thing that's common in all these cross-sections, I should've pointed out, we've basically labeled the property line as this red dashed line. So that represents the edge of the golf course property, the start of the residential property. What we've proposed is basically about a 13-foot flat area that we can do planting on. I'll go into more details on the planting here in a moment. Then, one of the things we're gonna have to do is collect the rear yard drainage from those homes. And so we would do a swale, basically, in that 25-foot buffer. And then the, this is one of the locations of the mandatory six-foot vinyl fence, which would be right here, pushed over to the, basically closer to the proposed residences. And we'll, we can talk in a minute, there'll be hedges and shrubs in front of that. So that's basically the two 25-foot buffer areas on the north parcel. The other area that we've got shown here in green is the edge condition up against Benita Lakes. And so you see that on the bottom of this page. I lost my pointer. There we go. And so, Benita Lakes has an existing upland preserve that is about, I think it varies from, it varies from about 35 to 75 feet in width, somewhere in that neighborhood that is mature upland vegetation that's in there. Then there's a 25-foot open space tract that has a hedge between the upland preserve and the property line of those residences in Benita Lakes. And then we would propose a 15-foot buffer area in the golf course property, in which, again, we'll talk about planting details here in a second, but we would plant that buffer edge. One thing I wanna note on the Benita Lakes section, this is the one location where they have an independent water management system. They are basically self-contained, so they will not drain into our site. And we've got something shown in the cross-section here, basically a small berm in that rear yard that says, we're not gonna drain into their site either. So they won't have to accept runoff from us. So then, now we get into, and you'll see this, I'll give a description of this section in some detail here. You'll see this in other locations. But in the areas where we have 50-foot buffers, so specifically, this would be down on Wood Ibis, where those existing homes back up to the proposed homes. And then also on the north golf course parcel, where these homes on Wild Turkey back up to the proposed homes. We've got two options shown. And some of what we've been dealing with is, the city's consultant is engaged in doing this regional drainage design at the same time that we are doing the design for, or the zoning and planning for this proposed development. So we've got a couple of options, because we're gonna need to see how the city's consultant's design shakes out before we know which way this goes. In either event, both of these are 50-foot buffers. What you would see on the top, which is the city's consultant's current design, there's kind of a shallow detention area. This would be sodded. It's about four feet above the water table, so it's not something that's gonna grow weeds or hold water all summer, it'd be easily maintained in mode. And then we would have, if we, the developers' sides, they need it, the fencing here on the, basically, the, towards the development side of that buffer area, and planting up against that fence. The other alternative, which is what we originally had included in the master concept plan, was to do a four-foot tall berm within that buffer area and plant on that berm and try and shield the two uses. That way, either way, again, we would accept the runoff from those adjacent residences. So this gets busy now and on the right, because this is a significant number of locations. So what we have here in these sections are the locations where existing home sites will be up against one of these proposed lakes. So most of these are the section that's on the top here, Section D. The difference is, Section E is the section that has the eight-foot path that we talked about before, on the west side of this lake. So the typical section when a lake is up against a residential area is basically about 15 feet of flat space at the top of bank that would be sodded. It would be sloped towards the lake to accept runoff from the rear yards. And then basically, a four-to-one slope for the actual bank itself down to the lake that would take about 21 feet. So basically, it's 36 feet from the edge of water to the property line that you see there in the dashed red line. The other condition, which we talked about before, on the left, on the west side of this lake, would be the section where we've got the pedestrian path running along the lake. So just an eight-foot path that we would meander on that top of bank area. And again, shade trees planted at a 50-foot spacing in that area. Again, as part of this work, we would basically fill in and regrade all of those shallow ditches I showed you earlier that are along those edges. And it'd be something that you can mow, maintain, and take care of. This one's probably not a tremendous amount of interest to anybody. So this is basically along Cockle Shell Drive, where that is up against the proposed lake in the southern golf course parcel. So we'd have our eight-foot path within the right-of-way and then a small berm between Cockle Shell and the proposed lake. Those are separate water management systems, so basically, we need to keep the stormwater from both of those separated. Section G is down here on, I believe this is Fenner Court. So there's an area where we've got a 50-foot buffer between the property lines of the residences there on Fenner and the proposed property lines within the residential homes that would be in the golf course site. And very similar cross-section to what we saw earlier, where, you know, we've gotta basically work with the city's consultant. And it'll either be Alternative 1, which is sort of that shallow storage area, or Alternative 2, where we can do some kind of berm and planting on top of it. But either way, we would, we would plant those edges. So down now on the south, on Benita Pines, again, very similar. The city's, our original cross-section was what is shown here in the bottom, which was a shallow swale with a four-foot tall berm. There presently is a ditch basically on the north end of Benita Pines, the south end of the golf course, that basically straddles that property line. The city's consultant's design currently has that ditch staying in place. So we'll just have to work through what that looks like. But these are the two alternatives. And we'll talk about planting intensity here shortly. Again, this would be one of the locations where we would have a required fence to screen these two uses. And then I believe these are the last two. So basically, Section I is down here at Cypress Plantation. One of the things that the city's consultant has identified is Cypress Plantation was constructed lower than many of the other adjacent communities, so it's a little more susceptible to flooding. And so, they have, the design the city's consultant has done basically separates Cypress Plantation from the development water management system. So there'd be a small swale. Again, this would be something dry, not like we showed you before, something that would be dry, able to be maintained in mode, up against Cypress Plantation. And then the eight-foot path on top of the berm between the two uses. And then finally, down here on the south end, this would be basically the buffer between Benita Pines, where the lake is up against Benita Pines. This is out of the city's consultant's design. The existing ditch that is here would remain. And we would have a berm to contain the water from the golf course ponds down to the proposed lake. So, final thing that I'm gonna cover, and then I'm gonna turn it back over to Wayne, is again, the, one of the questions that came up at the last meeting was about landscape. And so we tried to, you know, what we've done is put together a conceptual buffering plan just to offer what our thoughts are. So the areas that you see here in blue are areas that are not, the buffers are not as wide, they're 25 feet. And also 15 feet up against Benita Lakes, where we've got the existing preserve and the existing open space tract on that side. So in those cases, we would do a slightly more intense planting plan, have trees spaced at 20 feet with a hedge basically planted at four feet. And eventually, all this landscaping would be maintained by the homeowners' association of this community. And the hedge would be maintained at a five-foot minimum height. maintained at a five-foot minimum height. The areas in green where we have a 50-foot buffer, trees at a 30-foot spacing, hedge goes in at three foot in height, and would be maintained at five feet. And then finally, this is the buffering plan on the south golf course parcel. One thing I should have mentioned, again, we would not propose to plant along the lake edges, other than sodding it to not block those views. So on the south parcel, all of these are 50-foot minimum buffers. So in the areas that you see, again, along Benita Pines, on the south end of the property here, trees at 30-foot spacing and a hedge, again, on Fenner Court, where we've got a 50-foot buffer, trees at 30-foot spacing and a hedge. And then, the one kind of outlier is the city consultant's design has a real skinny pond that's going to allow runoff from Paradise Road to get into this regional water management system. So it doesn't provide necessarily the same amount of space as some of these other buffer areas. So that's one that we would propose planting on the development side, just to shield the two uses. So, that is all I have. I'm going to turn it back over to Wayne, who's going to conclude.
May I ask you one question?
Absolutely.
The water issues that you alluded to in the beginning of your presentation, they would continue to exist whether you did something or nothing. Is that correct?
Yeah, the problems there are, this needs to be rebuilt, yes. So...
That was my question.
Okay.
Hi, for the record, again, I'm Wayne Arnold, and I'm going to pick up where Dan left off and just try to conclude our presentation. One of the things that your custom scene, we had several deviations that were a part of our proposal, and staff had analyzed those in their staff report, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on them. But I did want to touch on a couple of those that we think are important to continue to dialogue with the city. As I mentioned early in the presentation, we're okay with the denial for the gated access point. That's not an issue for us. But what we do need to talk about as part of that is, there's a requirement where you have excavations within 50 feet that we provide a fence. And we've asked for a deviation not to do that in all cases, and part of that's because this design is fluid with the Singhoffen consultants. And also, if this goes forward as planned, the city's going to own parts of these lakes, and it's going to be part of the maintenance obligation. So we really think it needs to be discussion through staff and council as to what that lake edge gets. Does it get a fence? Does it not? Some people may prefer to look at a lake and not a fence. It probably doesn't make sense to have a hodgepodge approach at that. So, I think you'll see in one of staff conditions, it kind of leaves some of these deviations open for further dialogue with staff and council, and that was one of those that I wanted to highlight that we will continue to do. We also asked for deviation on Number 11. Your code allows only a certain amount of your projects to be, for their open spaces to count the water management system. And in this case, because we're so heavy on lakes, we had asked for a deviation. Staff's discussion on that deviation point talked about, well, if they're presented with information that shows that we have at least 20% open space, Dan Waters' group did an analysis, and we think we have more than 25% open space outside of our lake areas that will be part of the development tract. And that would include the small parklet from relocating Maddox, the eight-foot pathway that goes along one of the lakes, the other open space areas, the amenity center, things of that nature. So hopefully, once we can give that breakdown to staff, they will maybe change their mind on that deviation and recommend approval of it. So I just wanted to highlight those. The others, we'll be happy to answer questions if there are detailed discussions you would like to have on any of them. But I just, the presentation's going to be lengthy, and I know we have a lot of questions, so I'm trying to focus on the things where I think there's going to be some discussion. The next part of our discussion is looking at the findings. So your land development code has findings, and staff has gone through those and identified those that we met, and in some cases, they said we mostly met. And I think the mostly mets were because this is still fluid in some of the discussion with staff and ultimately with council on this matter. But your criteria are consistency with the comprehensive plan, and I think we all agree that, you know, the density and the uses that we're seeking are consistent with your comprehensive plan. You don't have any performance standards that are required to be met, but, and then use of bonus densities, we're not seeking any of those, so it's not really applicable. Is it compatible? We think with the reliance on single-family, the buffer treatments that we've proposed, that yes, we are certainly consistent and compatible with our neighboring communities. Does this place undue burden on our transportation network? No. We substantially reduced the request to 350 units. We don't trigger any improvements. Staff does have a condition in there that wants us to do some traffic count monitoring at the intersection of Paradise and Shangri-La, and we're happy to do that. The condition, I think, it's going to be worked out at the time of development order, what the specific count stations will be and the timing, et cetera, but we're in agreement that we will do some counts of that nature. One of the other criteria, G, for instance, are we supported by the findings of Section 4-299? And those are specific to plan developments. So, again, yes, the use is appropriate for one and two-family homes. We do concur with staff recommended conditions, as I've conditioned those here. They are safeguards to the public interest. The impacts of the conditions are related. Our deviations are warranted. Most of those track back to the need to accommodate the design changes for the regional storm water and altering land elevations in order to accept these and put in modern drainage improvements. And then, of course, the zoning board must find that all public facilities are or will be available, and as your report indicates, there are no level of service deficiencies, and we don't create any burdens on public services. So, the staff report also contains these recommendations, that the findings must be addressed. So here we are addressing those, so your recommendation will include those. And then, the deviations must be shown, that they enhance the achievement of our objectives, and that they don't affect the public safety. And I think we've demonstrated that they do not affect public safety if approved, as proposed. So in summary, we're consistent with your comprehensive plan. We've made a commitment to only single-family and two-family homes. We've reduced the unit count significantly to 350 units, well below the comp plan allowance for that. We've met the findings in your land development code for approval of an RPD. The deviations have met the public interest test, in our opinion. And, this RPD is unique, because I don't think you'll find another one that has worked so closely with the city staff and your consulting team to look at how we can enhance regional stormwater improvements in an area of the city where it's long been known that there are some deficiencies, there are older systems, some cases, they're unpermitted systems. We can make improvements to the system, but again, it takes up 31-plus acres of our site. So, we need some accommodation in that regard to make those happen. So with that, that's our presentation and conclusion, and we're here as a team to answer any questions that you may have.
I just have one.
Yes, sir.
Multifamily, you're talking about two attached, semi-detached offices, right?
Multifamily in your code is three or more attached units, so there would be no town homes, no multifamily buildings.
Two attached, right?
Two attached is deemed single-family and two-family attached, so that's all we allow. You can have a sort of a...
When you say, excuse me, I'm a little confused. Two-family attached?
Yes.
Means one building with one family, and an attached building with one family?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. It's called a bunch of different names in the industry.
I don't know if it's all remit, but what about garages? I mean, you're going to have one-car garage, two-car garage?
It would vary if they do the villa product, but a traditional single-family home's going to have a two-car garage.
Two-car garage. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Please.
No, I don't have any questions. I just want to hear everybody's presentation first.
Well, okay, then I guess the next thing is, we'll hear from the staff.
I got one quick one.
Please.
It was stated earlier, Dan Walkers was Singhoffen?
Dan Waters is with Peninsula Engineering.
Peninsula.
At the applicant's team. Singhoffen Engineers was an engineering firm hired by the city to look at the regional opportunities for obtaining stormwater benefits, and they also have been working, there are some grant opportunities that the city may find, and there are certain findings, and Singhoffen is designing the system to, so that you may better qualify for grant opportunities through FEMA and other forms.
And they're not here today? There's no part of the presentation from them?
No, Mr. Gambrell, the Singhoffen Associates were hired separately by the city to, prior to this property even coming into...
So they come into play, it'd be in the staff report.
Correct. Would not be involved.
Thank you.
Maybe we have the staff report, please.
Good evening. Mike Fegan with Community Development for the record, here to give the staff presentation for this case. I'll try not to be too repetitive. You just received a bunch of information from the applicant. There obviously is going to be some overlap with my presentation, but I'll try not to be too repetitious. The review team that reviewed the request along with me, Laura Gibson, our environmental specialist, Tom Ross with Traffic, Stuart Smith, Engineering, Jay Sweet, our surveyor and planner, Sean Gibbons, who is also a planner and does the bicycle pedestrian coordination for the city. We also had the Public Works Department take a peek, Lee County Natural Resources, and the staff attorneys, Theriak in Spain as well. So, similar to what I've done in previous times I've been up here, just to give you a brief overview of what this process and procedure involves, this is obviously a rezoning request that's before you. With that being the case, there are standards of review and certain findings that need to be reviewed in order to determine if this case cuts the muster, so to speak. With that, you have the staff recommendation. You're also going to have some public comment, it looks like. And then, of course, you have the zoning board recommendation, and we take it all to city council and see what happens. So the request itself, as you know, you have approximately 113 acres. Right now, it's all conventionally zoned for residential uses, and the request is to rezone it to a residential plan development for a maximum of 350 dwelling units. It is important to note that even though the zoning right now is conventional residential zoning, you do have a golf course redevelopment code section in your land development code that requires them to rezone it to a residential plan development. So that's why they are here with this specific application. I think we know where we are by now in terms of the aerial. I put stars over the north nine and the south nine of the two golf course tracks that are up for discussion with Paradise Road that bisects them. And some background, and some of this was already discussed in the previous presentation. This was a former public golf course that closed in the mid-2000s and has been inactive ever since. Since its closure, some of the maintenance of the golf course has continued, grass cutting, landscaping, certain things like that. And some maintenance was not continued or was relatively neglected, such as the drainage system. You heard before about the pump station, which is a primary part of the drainage system that discharges the water to Spring Creek, really wasn't maintained ever since the closure of the golf course. And then you also have a lot of the pipes that you heard about that have outlasted their usefulness. So, there is that situation that's there. The original request with this application was for 500 units with a variety of housing types, including townhouses and multiple-family housing as well. Through the several iterations and the going back and forth with staff and the city's consultants, the request was reduced to 350 units maximum, and the types of housing were also reduced to single-family and two-family, which tends to be a bit more compatible with the surrounding existing residential development. So with that, I have up here the original master concept plan that showed the 500 homes, and you can see that it's quite different from the proposed plan, which we'll show on the next slide. But you could see that the residential areas were largely expanded, especially on the southern tract. And on the northern tract, they had somewhat of a flex area on the west side of Carnoustie, which originally was proposed as either residential or water management. One of the, one of the things the staff does is that when we have additional questions or concerns, we outline them in a formal letter that we send to the applicant, and we ask that they address them. And one of the things that we ask them that they address is to not make it a flex area, pick one or the other, and let's go from there. The staff preference was obviously to make that area used for water management. The applicant agreed, and with that, you have the revised plan that now more clearly outlines all of the water management areas, as well as a reduction density down to 350 units, largely because they are utilizing so much of the land area towards water management. With the schedule of uses, the uses that they had requested are largely customary to residential developments that you see elsewhere in the city. There was nothing really that stuck out as far as red flags went, but we did have some concerns as far as the way some of these uses jived with the golf course redevelopment regulations that you have in the land development code. So with that, there were some uses that staff recommended to remove from the schedule, including multifamily development, townhouse development, and you heard about the entrance gates before. They had requested deviation to allow it to be a gated community, and staff didn't think that was appropriate, given the surrounding residential area. And the fact that they are also going to be creating a pathway system that was going to remain open to the public anyway, the justification for the gates just didn't seem to make sense for staff. So that was one of the uses that we recommended to be removed, and the applicant has since agreed to that. With the development regulations, these are also included in your staff report and in your application backup. I have them up here for the north parcel. They are the same for the north and south, as far as the two main dwelling unit types for a single-family and two-family attached. What they're proposing is not unheard of or unseen within the city, especially within residential plan developments, where you do tend to have smaller lots kind of clustered together to leave room for essentially a significant area to be dedicated solely for green space, open space, water management. So we did find the development standards to be in line with those types of proposals. With regards to the amenity area, they are proposing an amenity area on the north nine. No real issues with the proposed development regs there. One thing we did see, though, was their proposed building height at 45 feet. That's actually in violation of the comprehensive plan. The future land use category on the north nine allows maximum building heights at 35 feet, so we did want to put in a correction for that to 35 feet to avoid conflicts with the comprehensive plan, and the applicant has agreed to that. With the deviations, I am going to go ahead and get into those a little bit more, and not just discuss the ones that were denied. I'm going to go ahead and go over all of them, if that's all right. There were 14 deviations requested in total. Staff's recommending approval of nine. There were three that we're recommending denial of, and there were two that we don't think were necessary, so we're recommending that they be withdrawn. With the first deviation, briefly touched on it in the previous slide, that has to do with gates and walls, which there is a prohibition for gates and walls within the golf course redevelopment section of the code, and they wanted to go ahead and allow the gates and walls. And, you know, largely, the justification was that the gates would not really be undermining interconnectivity, and that the walls would be used as an additional screening technique, where certain development sections would be closer to the perimeter boundary. As far as the staff thoughts on that, you know, you have many of the surrounding neighborhoods that aren't gated, and with the purpose of these land development regs to try and create a development that is compatible with surrounding communities, staff just didn't think it was appropriate to have a gated community in this particular area. So, we recommended denial for the gate aspect of it. For the fences and walls, those are a bit more prevalent in surrounding communities, especially around the entry areas for certain communities. Staff preference is to do additional landscaping in lieu of fences and walls, but we understand the purpose of the fence and walls and the additional screening measures that they can provide. The staff is recommending approval of that particular portion of the deviation, with the condition, though, that these walls be treated like residential project walls. And residential project walls in the code require landscaping on the exterior side of the walls. So the adjacent residences that will be seeing the wall won't just be staring at a blank wall, they'll actually be staring at landscaping instead. So that is a condition that staff did throw in there as a caveat to approving that particular deviation. With the second deviation, this goes back to one that Wayne had talked about earlier, where we do have a code section in Chapter 3, which is the development standards portion of the code, that says that the city can require fencing around excavation areas located less than 100 feet from property under separate ownership. And their request is to not require fencing around the proposed lakes. The justification's that the lakes are a public benefit, which they are, and that they could provide a lake view for residents in some of the existing communities, and they should be enjoyed. Not a bad justification, I think, where staff is landing right now, is that that's something that tends to be decided at the development order stage, and not necessarily at the zoning stage right now. One of the things that you heard is that the final drainage plan is somewhat of a moving target, and there's been many iterations of that final drainage plan. And with that, the exact location of these lakes, their sinuosity, their direct location to the perimeter boundary, all of that gets determined with the final drainage plan that comes at time of local development order. So staff feels that's a more appropriate avenue to review a deviation like that, and that saying a blanket no right now to saying, "Nope, you'll never have to do walls or fences," is probably a little premature at this stage, until we get that final drainage plan. So staff is recommending denial of that. So, staff is recommending denial of that particular deviation at this time. For the third deviation, this had to do with a code section that requires bicycle pedestrian facilities in a public right-of-way. And their request was to allow for an alternate pathway system that is out of a public right-of-way. The justification provided is that the existing Paradise Road right-of-way is constrained, and you can definitely make that argument. And that one of the things that staff has heard, and the applicant has heard it as well, is that there are many concerns with residences using the existing Paradise Road sidewalk. Its proximity to the travel lanes is less than two feet in certain areas. To kind of give you a comparison, the code for new roadways and new sidewalks requires at least a five- or six-foot separation between the sidewalks and the existing travel lane or the proposed travel lanes. So, you sort of have this non-conforming segment along Paradise Road, and it really didn't make sense to have an applicant enlarge something that already had concerns. So, the alternate pathway system that they're proposing would take pedestrian and bike traffic off of that Paradise Road sidewalk system and through the development and come out on the south side of the development along Cockle Shell. The intent is that it would remain open to the public, and in fact, staff has conditioned it that way. This doesn't mean that the Paradise sidewalk system is going away. It's still going to be there, and it's going to remain. So, essentially, you now have the residents that will have a choice of which system they would prefer to utilize. One of the conditions that we did recommend with approval of this particular deviation is that the proposed pathway was originally to be six feet wide. We requested that it be at least eight feet instead, and the applicant has agreed to that and has provided a revised cross-section that shows that. With the fourth deviation, this is a development standards that requires developments that are more than five acres to have two or more means of ingress egress, and the request is to allow for the north tract to have a single ingress egress point and the southern tract to have a single egress egress point. For the north parcel, that parcel does have limited frontage along a roadway, so the access points are limited by default. The only other available access point, other than what they're proposing now, which is taking a residential lot, Lot 86, and converting it to an access point, the only other one that's available would be off of Carnoustie. And going back and forth with the city's consultant, and also going back and forth with staff as well, it was determined that that area would be better served as water management and storage lakes as opposed to an access point. So, that's what the revised master concept plan shows for that. For the southern parcel, the original master concept plan did have a secondary access off of Cockle Shell. That was removed and replaced with water management as well, based on going back and forth with the city's consultants. One of the things that staff is recommending with this, and it came up in the analysis and it is in your staff report, is that if this is to be the case, and if staff were to approve this deviation, which we are comfortable with, they would need to meet a notification provision that's in the code that outlines an emergency access plan for these tracks, and this plan is to be recorded in the public record and made available to all prospective buyers and residents of these communities. And it's one of those things that they would have to prepare this emergency access plan to be reviewed by emergency services that serve Bonita Springs. If it is determined that the emergency access plan isn't sufficient, they have to revise the MCP and provide the access points. But we don't see the harm in giving them the opportunity to go down that path. In fact, the code allows for that to occur, so we are comfortable approving that deviation, provide that they do provide that emergency access plan for review and that it is suitable. For the fifth deviation, this establishes minimum dimensional standards for these complete streets designs, and they wanted to allow an alternate design instead. But the roadway cross-section they provided does show the six-foot sidewalks. It does show shared bike lanes, which we call share rows. That is permitted, and it's actually a popular tool that you use in complete streets, where you have travel lanes that are low in speed to be able to share the road with bicycles as well. There's actually a certain part of Terry Street that does that. So, we actually didn't see the need for that particular deviation, because it looked like the cross-section was meeting the code. So, that's one of the ones that we're recommending that the applicant can withdraw, because we don't see it's needed. The same goes with deviation six. This is within the same code section with regards to street trees within the complete streets design. And essentially, what they're saying is, you know, can we only plant them where it's practical and not in conflict with utilities? Well, yes. The code accounts for that as well. The code accounts for avoiding conflicts with BSU utilities, overhead power lines, and the like. So, because the code already accounts for that, we don't think this deviation is necessary. With the seventh deviation, this has to do with reducing a 50-foot-wide buffer, which also requires screening at a minimum height of six feet and to allow the buffer to be reduced overall. The intent of the buffer, when that section of the code was written, this is in the golf course section of the code, the intent of the buffer was twofold. It was meant to be visual, you know, visually screen some of these uses from the existing residential areas, but it was also meant to be spatial to allow for that area to be used for alternate means, such as a pathway system, additional drainage, a tree-lined trail, things like that. The applicant's requesting to use lakes as part of the buffer requirement, which makes sense from the spatial standpoint. You're still going to have that distance separation, because you're going to have these lakes, and many of them are on the perimeter of the project. And they are proposing landscaping and a six-foot wall where the buffer would be less than 50 feet. And cross-section A, which is on the next slide, and it's one of the ones that the applicant went over with you previously, is a good example of how that can work, where you have the existing residential area, which is here, and you have what is going to be the additional planting area, drainage, the proposed fence or wall, and additional drainage. So, a thing to keep in mind is that even though the buffer is reduced, that doesn't necessarily mean that development is going to be any closer to the existing residential than in other areas, because you do have accommodations for the planting area, the two various areas of drainage, additional landscaping, where they're showing a fence as well. So, it's not like it's going to be a development area that's necessarily closer. So, because of that, staff felt that it was okay to recommend approval of that particular condition. But again, you know, sort of keeping with the mantra of wanting to assimilate into this environment, we are asking the applicant to prioritize landscaping over fencing to meet some of these heightened opacity standards in the LDC for this particular deviation. For deviation number eight, this is a part of a code section that requires a tree-lined trail 12 feet wide in areas where the buffers do end up being less than 50 feet wide, to allow this alternate pathway plan on the south side or no pathway plan where a pathway isn't feasible, but to include additional buffering and landscaping. As you saw, the MCP does include an alternate pathway plan that runs mainly through the southern tract, and because of that, a pathway may not be possible on the northern tract. The northern tract is, you know, somewhat scrunched already in terms of developable area for any type of meaningful development to occur, and you do have significant water management areas on that side as well. They already are providing sidewalks interior to the site for the residences. They're going to be providing this alternate pathway that will be open to the public. So, we do feel that the intent is being met in terms of providing these alternate walking, biking, pedestrian routes through the site, and that in areas where a pathway is impossible, you know, we were going to ask for additional landscaping to be included anyway, and that is something that they are willing to provide for us. So, with that, we do think that the alternate pathway is okay, as long as the width was increased to eight feet, as we spoke about in a previous deviation. And we do want to see the revised cross-sections that show the enhanced buffering and landscaping in areas where a pathway is impossible. For deviation number nine, this one has to do with roadway width, and the way it's written in your land development code, it's based on the amount of development that you have on one or both sides of the roadway, and I broke it down for you up there on the slide as far as what the development width would be or the roadway width would be, given the state of development. And largely, what you see is, on the northern tract especially, you have a limited amount of frontage. You have this little area off of Carnoustie Court, which really is the only true frontage that the property has right now. What they're proposing is to utilize a different portion off of Paradise Road, which involved them buying a residential lot and converting it to their access point. In either instance, this particular code section wouldn't be met, so this deviation would have been required anyway. Even if they used the existing frontage option off of Carnoustie, it still wouldn't be wide enough to meet the code section. So, this deviation was going to come either way, and because of that, and because we do have a preference for using Lot 86 off of Paradise for the access over Carnoustie, we do believe that they have demonstrated sufficiently that this is a worthy deviation request. And obviously, this would be for the northern tract only. The southern tract doesn't have that issue, so this deviation would only be for the northern tract. This is an example of the cross-section that was provided that shows the conversion of the residential lot, Lot 86, to the access point, and you can see in the cross-section where they're also proposing the various planting areas, a fence as well. So, there is going to be adequate separation from the existing residential areas to what the roadway is going to be. It's very similar than if you travel up and down roads throughout the community there, whether you're turning onto Carnoustie or Maddox or Fenner, Wild Turkey, any number of the roadways there where you have a corner where you have a road that fronts a property, the distances tend to match up relatively similar to what they're proposing. So, we don't see it as an issue with compatibility. For deviation number 10, this had to do with heritery preservation and replacement standards that are in the land development code. There were heritage trees that were observed on-site, and we get into that in a future slide with regards to the environmental components of the project. And the observed trees are in areas that are being proposed for the stormwater lake system, so something kind of has to give. It is important to note that originally, the applicant wasn't proposing any type of replacement. It was just going to be removal of these trees to allow room for the stormwater management lakes. Staff really didn't think that was acceptable. So, staff is requesting that there be a replacement standard, and they did amend their deviation request language to now include replacement at a one-to-one ratio of the heritage trees that are going to be removed. They are requesting a smaller height than what the code allows. The code calls for 20-foot replacement trees, they're asking for 14 feet. Staff is okay with that overall, mainly because there has been a documented landscape shortage in the city that's been going on for several years now, really since 2017. And obviously, you know, trees need time to grow, so there's a shortage of mature trees in many areas. So, we do understand that, but we do want the applicant to make the attempt to secure the 20-foot plantings and to provide evidence demonstrating that they have tried to supply or secure the 20-foot plantings, and that in no instance can the plantings be less than 14 feet. So, if there is an issue at that point, they're going to have to try to find a way to figure it out. That's the lowest we're willing to go. For deviation number 11, this is a code section that Wayne brought up as well, this particular deviation, and this has to do with how much, what percentage, should I say, that your stormwater lakes can count towards your open space requirement. The code caps it at 25%, and after that, you have to use other means to get to your open space requirement, whether it's dry detention areas, pedestrian ways, the open space for the residential tracks, you know, et cetera. What they're requesting is to allow the stormwater lakes to account for 40% of the overall requirement. This deviation probably wouldn't be needed if there wasn't so much land area devoted to the stormwater lakes. So, staff understands its purpose overall, and I think staff could be comfortable with an approval of that particular deviation if they could provide the calculations that show that they are also getting some of this open space by other means. I know you heard Wayne say that they are running those calculations and that they can do it, and we have no reason to doubt that, but until we're able to take a look at that analysis for ourselves, the staff recommendation is to deny this particular deviation. With regards to deviation number 12, this has to do with the off-site sign. Excuse me. We have a sign code that says that if you have a non-conforming sign, meaning it's a sign that doesn't meet the required standards of the code, that you cannot alter that sign by more than 25% in a 12-month period. And essentially, what they're asking for is to be allowed to exceed that threshold to utilize the existing sign and refurbish it and include the new community names of the proposed development on that sign. And, you know, the sign is an older sign, it's well over 15 years old, if not older, and that sign was put there prior to the passing of the sign code that we have now in the city. So, it predates the sign code that has this particular requirement. We do agree that the sign needs to be refurbished, and one of the aspects that we're looking to sort of effectuate here is that with approval of this particular deviation, that they also include the other communities that are on that sign as part of the refurbishment, so that the sign as a whole is refurbished and more well-maintained, and that the names of the communities that already have copy on that sign be able to remain in perpetuity, and the applicant has agreed to that. The deviation 13 is also with the sign code, it's relatively similar. It's the same sign, but this is a sign portion that requires that if you're going to have an off-site sign, which is what this is, it's not on the site, it's off-site, it's on the corner of Old 41 and Cockle Shell. Essentially, that you try to have these off-site signs to be within 500 feet of the nearest intersection that involves a turning movement to the project, and what they're requesting is that they be allowed to utilize the existing sign as the off-site sign. And again, you know, this is a sign that predates those code standards and those code requirements. It's a sign that is utilized now by some of the surrounding golf course communities that already have their community names up on the sign. So, we don't see any harm in allowing it to remain, as long as it is refurbished and maintained, and that the existing communities that are on that sign be allowed to remain on that sign in perpetuity. And the 14th deviation, this has to do with a code section that prohibits alterations of ground elevations within 30 feet of the golf course boundary. And essentially, what they're asking for is, you know, it may be necessary to alter some of the elevations along the boundary to effectuate this stormwater project, whether that's the creation of the lakes, berms, or swales to help direct the water to where it needs to go. It's likely that this is going to be necessary. And since the amount of land area dedicated to stormwater has increased, we do understand that elevation changes may be necessary to assure a functioning system. And, you know, you have certain alterations that are more shallow than others. You have certain alterations that are actually going to be filling in some of the existing shallow swales and dishes to flatten out the area a little bit more, to establish new land area for this new system. But we do understand the role that being able to alter the elevations will play in creating an effective stormwater management system. So, staff is recommending approval of that deviation. But again, all of this is going to be subject to seeing the final drainage plan at time of development order. Moving on to the comprehensive plan, you heard a little bit about the comprehensive plan in, excuse me, in the applicant's presentation. You have two different future land use categories over the golf course. You have the north nine, which is a moderate density, single-family residential land use, and you have the southern tract, which is a medium-density, multifamily residential land use, actually. Slightly different densities attributed to both. The northern tract has about 5.8 units per acre is what the maximum calls for. The southern tract is at six units per acre. You know, and when you do those density calculations, you know, essentially what they could ask for, I'll just take the northern tract as an example, will be upwards of 300 units, give or take. Of the 350 that they're proposing... Of the 350 that they're proposing, about 210-ish will probably be on the northern tract. So it's well below the density that they could ask for on that northern tract. The same holds true for the southern tract at the 6 units per acre. The density they could potentially ask for is probably in the neighborhood of 270 or 280. And what they're proposing is somewhere in the neighborhood of 140 or 150. Likely, when all is said and done, it'll probably be a little bit less than that because of all the area that's going to be utilized for stormwater. But the point is that they are below the thresholds of the comprehensive plan with what they're asking for as far as density goes. And as far as the allowable housing types, there are no inconsistencies with the allowable housing types that they were originally asking for. But staff felt it was more appropriate to stick with just the single-family and the two-family attached, which they have agreed to. You also have a capital improvements element in your comprehensive plan. And largely, this is an element that has to do with certain governmental responsibilities to provide facilities that are adequate to serve existing and future communities and projects, whether that's water, sewer, stormwater, roadways. The area has all of these facilities in place already. With regards to roadways, you know, one of the things that we are proposing is a traffic monitoring condition for Paradise Road and for Shangri-La, the intersection there. You know, even though those roadways aren't necessarily failing, they're not operating below their level of service, improvements are likely, and improvements are likely needed. But to get a better understanding of the scope of those improvements, we need better data. And that's where the monitoring is going to come into play, and that is something that the applicant has agreed to. So that does satisfy that particular component of the element. And the reduction in density that they've gone through over the last year, mainly tied to, and to accommodate the stormwater improvements for the area. So that, we do feel that the project does meet the intent of that element overall. And that is kind of a segue into the next topic that you heard a lot about from the applicant, which is stormwater overall. So the existing system is an older system. It's from March of 1980. The standards were very different in 1980 than they are today. So you do have a system that is old, it's outdated, it's not functioning the way it should overall. But it does have its merits in that, you know, for an example, you know, it is accepting water from surrounding communities, some 170 acres' worth of surrounding communities and off-site contributions. But it is an area that, again, because it's old and it's outdated, it does have its problems. So after Hurricane Irma, back in 2017, the city applied for FEMA funding to develop and construct this flood reduction project of the stormwater project that you keep hearing about, for Paradise Road and the surrounding communities. And in September of 2020, the city was awarded modeling and design funding through FEMA. And that's when the city contracted with Singh Hoffman and Associates to help model and design these flood reduction stormwater improvements. In June of '21, there were three options that were presented to council by Singh Hoffman. And all three options required the use of the golf course property to help effectuate this master stormwater plan. And of those three options, options 1 and 2 were the most cost beneficial, and that is a FEMA requirement for the grant funding. So council did provide direction to staff to, you know, work with the property owner and develop a hybrid of options 1 and 2 for storage and conveyance of stormwater. Again, with the goal to be to alleviate some of the flooding concerns that have plagued the area for a long time now. The MCP has been revised to account for this additional storage. I think you heard before that, you know, some 27% of the land area overall is devoted to lakes, and that's true. But when you factor in some of the dry retention areas, the easements they're going to be throughout the community to help carry the water to these systems, you're probably more in the neighborhood of 35% of the overall land area being devoted to stormwater. And when you look at this original system, this is something that was touched on earlier as well, just to kind of give you an idea of how much the standards have changed. You know, back in 1980, the design criteria was the one-day, five-year storm event, which was about 5 and 1/2 inches worth of rain. That's almost laughable now because we get more than that, you know, almost, you know, on a regular basis yearly with some of the heavy storms that we have here. So the new standard for the project as a whole is the three-day, 25-year storm event. And it's actually the three-day, 100-year storm event for the actual residential tracks. So the residential tracks are going to be even up a little bit higher than the roadway system that they're going to be designing for these projects. So the standards have increased over time, they've gotten better. And I think what you'll see is an opportunity to take a system that has its issues and bring it into today's standards and help alleviate some of the flooding and concerns. This is an example of an area, and it was used in the applicant's presentation as well, that shows the surrounding communities that do send their water through the golf course. With the proposed plan, that's not going to change. The system's still going to be designed to accept water from these communities as well. But what we're seeing right now is a system that tries to do that and doesn't necessarily do it very well. So the goal is to fix that. With traffic, the original TIS, the Traffic Impact Study, was reviewed by the city's traffic engineer. And the original TIS was for 500 units with a mix of single-family and multifamily. Obviously, as the unit count dwindled and the dwelling unit types changed, the TIS was amended as well. And we do have our traffic engineer actually on the phone if you have questions for him. But it was reviewed. There are various roadway segments that were analyzed as part of the report. Everything from, you know, Paradise Road, from the access point of the north parcel to the access point of the south parcel, the south parcel to Shangri-La, Cockle Shell from Maddox to Shangri-La, Shangri-La from Cockle Shell to Paradise, Imperial Parkway, north and south of Shangri-La, and various Old 41 segments as well. All these segments were analyzed within the Traffic Impact Study. And what we saw was the project would be responsible for contributing approximately 233 peak hour trips in the morning and 323 peak hour trips in the evening hours. But with that, and the TIS is available in your backup, these segments would not operate below the level of service capacity that they have right now. Now, some of that data does suggest, though, that a turn lane or some type of queuing or device may be warranted for access to the northern tract. What we saw in the applicant's presentation, it's on the master concept plan as well, is the applicant is proposing a roundabout alternative to do that. And, you know, and that does meet the intent of trying to provide an additional area for the cars to go. It also provides a traffic calming mechanism on Paradise, something that we've heard is needed and necessary as well. And we do have a condition in place, condition 4, with regards to traffic monitoring. We had proposed a specific methodology originally for how to do the data collection for this traffic monitoring. The applicant had a few adjustments they wanted to make to that. Couldn't come to an agreement completely at this point. I think we're both in agreement that the monitoring is necessary, getting better data is necessary. But we have agreed to allow the methodology to be figured out at time of local development order.
Question, if I may.
Sure.
The approval of the roundabout, is that strictly by the city? Or the state or county have to be involved in that?
It's a city-maintained right-of-way, so the approval would come from the city. One of the things that we had asked for and that they had provided was some calculations for the roundabout as far as the turning radius and things of that nature. I think there's still certain areas of that design that need to be tweaked. So we're okay with the concept, but you'll also see in the conditions that we want to leave room for these additional conversations to occur.
The city has the final approval?
Yes.
That was the question. Thank you.
Correct, yes.
Who pays for its construction?
That's probably going to be, that's going to need to be determined between Public Works and the developer. Oh, it's the developer.
Thank you.
Also with regards to traffic, you know, other than just vehicular traffic, you know, they are providing multimodal provisions as well. And this is something that was discussed in some of the previous deviations. You know, they're providing the required sidewalks that are necessary. They're going to be providing a pathway system, they're going to be providing share rows. These are all things that the code calls for to be consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan, and they have done that. With regards to the environmental components, there was an environmental report that was provided to staff as well. And it was reviewed by the staff's environmental specialist. In the report, there weren't too many things to note other than there were two listed species that were observed on-site, two different kinds of herons, the little blue heron and the tri-colored heron. And those birds are wading birds in that you most often find them around a water's edge. That's the habitat that they prefer. And actually, by establishing more stormwater lakes, more lake area, you're actually providing more opportunities for these birds. So we didn't see this project as being a hindrance to these species overall. And in fact, it'd provide more opportunities for them to come and visit the site. There were some heritage trees observed on-site, which we had talked about previously. The observed trees are found to be in the proposed water management areas. So they are proposing to remove them and replace them. They will need to go before the tree advisory board prior to doing so. And they will be doing that, and they have agreed to a one-to-one replacement for these trees. So all that together, we come down to the review criteria that we talked about on an earlier slide. And it's also found in Attachment A in your packet. You know, it has to do with compliance with the Bonita Plan and the LDC. We do believe that it is compliant with those codes and sections. Performance and location standards, there aren't performance standards, per se. There are certain location standards in play in the golf course redevelopment area. So we give it a partial check mark for that. But they did request appropriate deviations where they felt some of those standards were going to be an issue. So they did follow the correct path and the path that's afforded to them in the LDC to correct some of those issues, so we're okay with that. The densities are consistent with the Bonita Plan. In fact, they're well below the maximum density that could be afforded to the project overall. We do believe that the uses are compatible with existing and planned uses in the area. It's a residential development in a residential area, so there really weren't any conflicts there that we saw. No undue burden on infrastructure, that's mostly true. We do believe that the infrastructure that's in place is suitable to serve the project. We do have that traffic monitoring condition in play. We also have the stormwater system overall that the city is also trying to make better for the area, so we give them the check mark there. There were no environmentally critical areas that were observed on-site. There were a few species, as I noted, but they are providing opportunities for those species to remain. Public facilities are available to service the site, the uses are appropriate. We do believe that the conditions, which we'll get to in the next slide, do provide safeguards for the project and for the general well-being of the public as a whole. We do believe the conditions are reasonably related to the request. And we do believe that the deviations the staff supports, we do believe those deviations can enhance the project overall. The ones that we denied, obviously, you know, our thoughts on those. So with that, we do recommend approval of the project overall. And we would subject it to the following conditions that are outlined in your staff report. First condition, obviously, being that it needs to be consistent with the 10-page master concept plan that they provided, and that the unit count should not exceed 350 dwelling units. There's a schedule of uses that was also provided. And as you saw how we amended that schedule to remove the multifamily components, no vehicular gates and the like. The development regs, which is Exhibit C in your backup packet, we're fine with the development regs, the project needs to be consistent with those regs, other than the height of the amenity tract, which we corrected from 45 feet high down to 35 feet high at its max. Condition 4 is the condition for the traffic monitoring at Paradise and Shangri-La with the data collection and the methodology to be determined at time of local development order, which is relatively standard practice. Condition 5 has to do with conditioning that pathway system to be increased from 6 feet to 8 feet. Condition 6 has to do with the notification standards and that emergency preparedness plan and emergency access plan, since they are going to be limited to their access points. And if they need to modify the MCP to address aspects of that plan, they can do so in accordance with that condition and deviation administratively. Condition 7, with perimeter walls and fences, that's the condition that says that if you're going to have a wall or a fence up, you're going to treat it like a residential project wall where you landscape the exterior side so that you have residences that aren't just going to be staring at a blank fence. And if there are conflicts with drainage, they can provide an alternate plan to be considered. But right now, we're holding firm on that. Condition 8, which ties to deviation 7, which is, we want the applicant to be able to provide additional landscaping where it's feasible and enhanced buffering where feasible. And with regards to the fencing, as we talked about, you know, they can submit a particular fencing plan, but we want the focus to be on landscaping rather than fencing. But if they do propose fencing, and if it is approved, it needs to be consistent with the cross-sections that are in the master concept plan. Excuse me. Condition 9 is requiring the applicant to provide revised cross-sections that shows many of the enhanced buffering and planting areas where the pathway isn't feasible. And to show that these pathway whiffs are going to be increased to 8 feet. They actually do have a revised cross-section, you saw it up there already, so we're going to ask that they give it to us. Condition 10 is pursuant to deviation 10. And that is that the applicant needs to try and secure the required 20-foot-high replacement plantings for heritage trees. And in no instance can the plantings be less than 14 feet in height. Condition 11 has to do with allowing the existing community names on that off-site sign to remain in perpetuity. Condition 12 is tied to the roundabout with the final design needing to be tweaked. So that can be determined at time of local development order. And also, sort of putting them on notice, that the applicant needs to work with staff and Public Works to potentially provide additional traffic calming measures along Paradise as well. Condition 13 has to do with whether or not they find any artifacts when they do subsurface work. We're going to require them to reach out to the Division of Historic Resources with the state of Florida. If they do uncover anything, work stops, the state is brought in to do a review. You know, because of the age of the area, it's possible they might find something, so we wanted to put a condition in there to cover that. Condition 14 has to do with the developer holding a neighborhood meeting. They've held several meetings with the surrounding communities already prior to this hearing here today. What we're asking is that prior to commencement of construction, which is when all of these plans are finalized, you know, the only thing left to do is start putting shovels in the ground, that they hold one more to share the final design, the final plans with the surrounding communities. And they agreed to that condition. Condition 15 says that unless approved by a deviation or unless there are conflicts with water management, you need to provide the multimodal facilities. They are providing them, the cross-sections account for them. We just wanted to put it in writing so it doesn't go anywhere. Condition 16 basically says that, you know, we do have certain deviations that staff has recommended denial of. But we do think, you know, that they could have an opportunity if they provide the necessary information to change that recommendation from denial to approval. So this condition gives them the opportunity to provide additional information for staff to possibly reevaluate some of those deviations that were denied. And that they would need to apply for an amendment to the zoning to do that, but that it be done administratively. If they propose any new deviations, that would be a public hearing. Because that would be, that would be a change that was not contemplated previously, not presented previously. It would have to be vetted through a public hearing process. And condition 17 basically says that by approving this RPD, if it were to be approved, that does not guarantee that they're going to get their local development order permits and their building permits. Those are processes that they will still need to go through by the book to get your engineering permits to engineer the site and your building permits to ultimately build. So approval of this RPD doesn't guarantee that they get those permits. So those were the conditions that staff has, and I almost like I pressed a button that I wasn't supposed to. I almost like I pressed a button that I wasn't supposed to. There we go. So with that, questions or comments for staff? Like I said, I have the whole team here if you need us.
Let me ask you one question.
Yes, sir.
Have these conditions been reviewed with the applicant?
Yes.
And their reaction was?
They agreed.
They agreed.
Yes.
That's all I have. Anything else?
Yes, sir. Mike, have you been the planner on this project since it's been before the city?
Yes.
How long have you been working on it?
Over a year, off and on. They submitted early in 2021, but they had meetings with the city before then, sort of giving us a heads up that they were going to be submitting an application.
Meetings with the city, meaning meetings with city staff?
Yeah, we call them pre-application meetings. It's a standard thing in the city where before you file an application, if you essentially want to, you know, let the city know what's coming, get first blush reactions, so on and so forth. So from the start of that process, it's been over a year.
Okay. I've got lots of stormwater questions, Mr. Chairman. Is it appropriate now, or do we want to wait until hearing from folks? Do we want a break?
Well, I think what we would like to do is take a 10, 15-minute break to give everybody a chance to refresh and reflect a little bit on what's going on. Why don't we reconvene at 7:00, let's see, 7:35, okay?
And maybe, just because there's, we have a lot of public here, maybe if the board could hold its comments and questions till after the public has had their opportunity to speak, and then if the applicant staff can rebut, and then whatever lingering issues are out there.
This is exactly what we have projected, provided the staff and the applicant remain.
Okay.
Now, this is apparently what everyone's been waiting for. Let us take comments from the people who are here. Mr. Rooney has put you all under, I swear, just sworn in, so let us proceed. The gentleman there, will you please state your name, affiliation? And if you...
Good evening.
If we don't hear you with the mask, please understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. My name's Bob DiGialamo. I live at 25571 Fairway Dunes Court. I'm on the South Fifth, the Fifth House on the south side of the property, directly adjacent to the golf course. The open drainage ditch is directly behind my house. I'm a 33-year resident of Benita Springs, year-round. I'm a Vietnam veteran, life member of Vietnam Veterans Association of America, a lifetime member of the American Legion in Benita.
Thank you for your service.
Okay. And we have, I'm a member of the steering committee also, and we've worked with Barron Collier for the past year. We've brought up Barron Collier and Grady White, all of our concerns. And this is not my first rodeo here. I've been here with many other companies trying to develop the golf course with a lot of different ideas, and I've raised my voice a time or two about them. But let me say this. Grady White is the first company, and Barron Collier, and Barron Collier is the first company that I've seen here that really wants to satisfy the surrounding neighborhoods. They've been concerned about everything we've brought up to them, what we would like to see done. And we're not kidding ourselves, because we know that that property is too valuable to sit there and not be developed. And they've been really good with us. They've gotten back to us. They've educated us on some things, and they've really made us feel like that's a company that's going to do what they say they're going to do. Makes us feel good, and we are 100% behind them, and they're not buying us, but this is how we feel about this. We're 100% behind them, and we want to be neighbors that are in complete agreement with what they want to do over there. Of course, now, if they want to do anything major, they have to go to our HOA, because we are a condominium association. 80 homes there, but we are a condominium association, and anything they want to do adjacent to our property, they have to go to our association. But we are in complete agreement, and we would love to see this project start and start as quickly as possible.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Next, anyone? Madam?
For the record, my name is Barbara Ogle. My address is 24981 Carnoustie Court. I am on the east side of Carnoustie Court, one of the roads that will be, one of the areas that will have the major impact from the 200 homes or 200-plus homes that will be built on the east side of us. Deviation number seven, when they did the ordinances for the redevelopment of closed golf courses, they put in a 50-foot buffer to screen the existing residences against the new residential development. They are asking for a deviation in that area from 50 feet to 25 feet, and then with a six-foot white vinyl fence. We have a lake behind our home now. We will be losing that lake. It will move to the other side of the street. Our pool sits about 10 feet from our property line, and that lake will be filled in, and it will be used for homes and the buffer area. So I'm asking that you continue to keep that 50-foot buff... Ignore it, Derek?
Yeah, ignore it.
Okay.
That is not the Gong Show, don't worry about it.
So I'm asking, and I understand that there is a constraint, and there is a constraint because of the stormwater management. And again, there were several studies done, and Sing Hoffman did a study as well, that we need that area not only for our area, but for other areas north of Paradise Road. So I am asking that you consider that that buffer be set at 50 feet, and if they have to reduce the number of homes on Carnoustie, I'm sorry, but to have a backyard with a fence 25 feet, basically, from my backyard with smaller lots and a higher density, I don't approve that. Thank you.
Unless I'm mistaken, it was going to be landscaping, not a fence?
It's going to be a white vinyl fence, and it will be landscaping on the exterior...
On your side?
Yes, they're...
I just want to get it straight. I'm not arguing with you.
Right, no, no, it's a white...
It's going to be landscaping on your house, you're going to look at landscaping, the fence behind it?
That's correct. It's going to be a white vinyl fence with landscaping in front of it.
You're going to lose your lake.
Okay. Well, thank you again, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Paul Sheldon. I'm a resident and a representative of the Benita Lakes community. So we have a short presentation here regarding the concerns of our community. I'm happy to say also...
A limited period of time, sir, I'm sorry.
Understood, understood. We're going to be quick.
Thank you very much.
We're going to be real quick, thank you.
Thank you for your understanding.
Yes, so we have eight concerns. We have some of our community in the room, as well as our HOA Board of Directors. Familiarize everybody, Benita Lakes is the community with the north parcel or in the northeast side, 268 single-family homes, a gated community. 27 of those homes, which is 80% of our homes on the west side, are impacted and contiguous to the proposed new property. To be sure, what I'm presenting tonight, that we are in sync with our community, we circulated a petition with the eight issues we're going to talk about, and we have 240 signatures, again, 268 homes, if you remember. Here is our community, just to refresh everybody, it's oriented by the compass. The west side is where we have 80% of our homes on that side are contiguous to the proposed site. Here's a copy of the petition. We'll go back to it in a minute with the issues that we have. The first issue, oh, another orientation here. The north property in red, this is what is contiguous to Benita Lakes. So you can see in the red circle those homes. Deviation number seven is one of our eight items that is on our petition regarding a concern, okay? And a refreshment on deviation number seven is between Benita Lakes on the west side and the proposed community is a 50-foot preserve maintained by Benita Lakes, and sound insulation, noise insulation, view. So right now, that 50 feet, 35 feet of it, is being used for the proposed new community for the buffer zone, and we take extreme issue to that.
Can you show me the preserve, back up a slide and show me the preserve, please?
This page...
We don't have a pointer for him?
So, well, this is...
There you go, that little yellow dot.
Right here, right here.
Exactly, right here is the preserve area. This is Benita Lakes here. This is the preserve area that we now have, and they're proposing a 15-foot easement instead of a 50-foot easement.
So the preserve is...
Maintained by Benita Lakes, and it is between Benita Lakes and the golf course right now.
Golf course property now.
Yes. Between the golf course property now, yes, but as I said, the preserve is maintained by Benita Lakes today.
Got it.
Yes, okay. So that is our first concern. And next is what is between Benita Lakes and the golf course? So if I go back to the slide with the red circle, you will notice that there is a fence... Oops, I can't hear. Okay, it's not going back. Back one, please, operator. There is a fence between communities, the golf course and communities, but there is not a proposed fence between Benita Lakes, and it's tied in to the buffer zone. So take a look again, the area in red.
For some reason, we're going to overdo it.
It's a microphone.
The area in red, dotted line is between the communities. That is a fence. There is between Benita Lakes and the golf course community.
Are you saying that you favor a fence?
Yes, we have an interest in a fence and understanding what it is and what it's composed of.
Are you on a fence? Okay, I just wanted to understand that.
No, no, we want to understand what that fence would be like, because we heard tonight that it would be to, I think, commercial or residential standards. We'd like to know what that fence would be all about. Okay.
All right.
Okay. So now, we're going to go back to the petition. So eight items on there, the deviation, one, two, was the lack of a wall, three, water. All the meetings we've attended, water, water, water is on everyone's mind. We are very concerned of Benita Lakes. What will the impact be on the drainage in Benita Lakes? We have not seen that addressed firmly, independently by an engineering study, that there will be no impact to the water issues at Benita Lakes. So water. Utilities. When other neighborhoods have been developed in our area, one of the items in our petition is utilities have suffered, specifically electric, cell service, and cable has suffered. So we want to be sure that's covered by it. Next is the construction schedule. We know there's going to be a meeting in the future, the city has seen to that, but what is going to be the impact of that now when the community that's right behind us? We have lanai pools, which will be close to this construction, which will be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. What's the contingency?
Isn't it a little premature to worry about that when there aren't any construction plans even contemplated? I think you should wait to see what they are. Then if you have objections, then we'll address them, or the city will address them, right? I mean, you're arguing something that's inferior.
Well, you know, we feel better going into it if we knew some of the rules of engagement, seven to seven.
I don't know if the developer knows which rules.
Mr. Chairman, I let the developer respond to those questions. Allow them to proceed.
All right, well, we just have some time, Mr. Derrick.
Well, in a similar vein, you know, the golf course, we heard at the neighborhood meetings, has contamination. There'll be some remediation plan in the future. Doesn't give us a lot of comfort, as we, adjoining it, go through meetings discussing what's this new neighbor going to be like? Is the remediation going to be satisfactory? What's the impact on Benita Lakes and the like? Okay, so everything is in the future, but today is here and now. We need to know here and now, is the community of Benita Lakes covered on remediation and these factors? So aquifer well, there's going to be one drilled. What's the impact on Benita Lakes? We need assurances. This is our stance from our community.
We will assure that the developer will answer those questions after the public hearing.
Will they be answered to the satisfaction, though, of Benita Lakes?
That's not my purview.
And that's why we're here tonight.
All I can do is tell you that I will ask the developer to please address your points.
Okay, thank you. Mindful of the time, let's go back to deviation number seven.
We don't have much time, sir, please.
All right, well, this is important to us.
I think you've raised your point, and we can move on.
I think I want to add just a couple of points here.
Go ahead.
It's not going to be answered tonight, because there's so many changes coming, potentially, from what people might think today. But it seems to me that, from the experience thus far, and I can't speak for the developer, I would like to think that those kinds of issues belong in a direct dialogue with the developer at an appropriate time. I can't imagine they would not be willing to do that. Unfortunately, they may not even know tonight what those details are going to be. But I know that dialogue, certainly to encourage a dialogue, I know will happen.
I'm just going to add one, for all the members of the public who are here. The time limit for public input is four minutes. So the more dialogue going on without moving through, you're not, you're limiting other speakers, and ultimately...
Thank you again for your comments.
Thank you very much, yes.
Next, please, and try to limit your comments to four...
Well, Mr. Chairman, I do have a signed thing that I can speak for somebody else, so may I use part of his time?
I'm sorry?
I have a form signed by a neighbor that says that I can use part of his time.
So you want two times?
I want about five minutes, I think it's...
That's fine, go ahead, five minutes is fine.
All right. Can you get this set up so I can advance? Thank you. Dwight Esman, Paradise Road area. In southwest Florida, the term developer is almost always preceded by the word greedy. That does not apply to Barron Collier. I met a lot of the top people, Lamar and Blake Gable, Julia Sprawl, David Ginson. The company has a great reputation. They've been around for 100 years, and when Nick and Dan tell you that they believe their design could control the stormwater, they will be telling the truth as they see it. But stormwater forecasting is like weather forecasting. It doesn't always happen the way they predict. My big point is Barron Collier is requesting several deviations, because they claim they are being constrained by providing stormwater control above what they're required to handle. But we simply don't have enough facts to know that that's true. Sing Hoffman, the city hired Sing Hoffman as our stormwater consultant. They are a highly respected Orlando firm, and FEMA accepts their model for stormwater. Sing Hoffman said it would take 45 acres of the property to hold the stormwater and clean it up just a little bit, and 70 acres to do it right, and that was without any additional homes being built. Barron Collier submitted three master concept plans, three MCPs, in March, October, and November of last year. Notice the increase in the amount of blue area? But every one of the MCPs shows only 45 acres devoted to open land. Clearly, that can't be accurate. We don't know how many acres are set aside for stormwater, or if Sing Hoffman agrees it will work. Also, Barron Collier says the city will buy the extra land needed for stormwater, but we don't know how much land or at what price. So how are they constrained? In July 2019, the city council voted unanimously to approve the ordinance 1907 to improve the quality of life in the community. It was written by Community Development, Mike and John. Mike even suggested a 75-foot buffer zone. It got reduced to 50, and now they're saying 25 feet is okay, which, as long as it's got a wall, which wasn't permitted either. The ordinance says there should be 310 feet between existing homes if there's a road going between them. The staff now says 129 feet is okay. These two requests are particularly concerning, and they say the stormwater issue constrains them, but we don't know that, and there's another reason not to approve these deviations right now. The city or the county can buy all of the property to use for stormwater retention and improve water quality before it enters Spring Creek and Estero Bay, so we prevent additional problems with blue-green algae and red tide. We need to design the best system possible, not the least expensive. An application has been submitted to Lee County Conservation 2020 program to buy the land now that Barron Collier owns all the land. They bought the south half in October of 2020, and they bought the north half recently. They paid 6.1 million for all of it. Had they bought the entire course in 2020, we could have had an appraisal done, and a decision could be made.
Please, please, sir.
Please, please, sir, please.
Yes.
Just, just, and just comment on what's, what we're proposing. Don't tell me about FEMA or Lee County or anything. Just you oppose this because you don't think there's adequate water retention system, correct?
I don't think we know whether there is or there is not.
Okay, well, that's fine.
And...
That's your point.
And we don't know what amount of rainfall is in the current MCP. We don't know what it's designed for. This was 11 inches of rain over 20 days, two rainfall events of 11 inches for 20 days. Okay. I'm sorry, if I'm boring you, I will...
It's not a question of boring me. This had been, there had been a consultant on rainwater, has there not, who made recommendations?
We don't know what the recommendations are.
But they were in the proposal.
Not Singhafen.
Five-year rains and all this kind of stuff.
They say they are talking to Singhafen. We don't know what Singhafen is saying.
Well, then, let's ask, let's ask the developer what they're saying.
And I will try to make one more point.
Hurry, please.
The new homes will be much higher than the existing homes. If the stormwater system, if the pipes get blocked or the pumps don't work, they will get flooded. And who's going to pay? So, all I'm saying is, I'm sorry, let's just put everything on hold, make a continuance until we know more. Thank you very much for your time.
No booing.
You have a presentation?
No.
Mr. Chair, if it would be advisable, I think with the last conversation, I think what you were trying to get at is the relevance of the public comment. So, for those who didn't pick it up during the staff and applicant presentation, the criteria for consideration at today's hearing for the zoning board to consider the rezoning
Right, exactly.
There are three considerations. Whether there exists an error and ambiguity that must be corrected in the zoning map, whether there are adequate public facilities available to serve the proposed land use change, whether the proposed change is intended otherwise to rectify errors. There are findings that need to be required. The findings are required must be that the applicant has proved entitlement to the rezoning by demonstrating compliance with the plan and Land Development Code, that they meet or exceed all performance and locational standards, that the request is consistent with the densities, intensities, and uses set forth in the BNA plan, that the request is compatible with existing and planned uses in surrounding area, that the approval of the request will not have an undue burden upon existing transportation or planned infrastructure facilities to serve the streets and capacity for traffic to be carried by development, whether the request will not adversely affect environmentally critical areas and natural resources, and whether the public facilities are available to serve the proposed land use. Because this is a planned development, the additional findings must be that the proposed mix of uses is appropriate for a subject location, that the recommendation, recommended conditions to the concept plan and other regulations provide sufficient safeguards to the public, to the recommended conditions are reasonably related to the impacts of the public interest created or expected for the proposed development. And then for the deviations themselves, each deviation must be considered in whether or not it enhances the objectives of the planned development. So, does it go to compatibility and issues like that? And whether it preserves, promotes, or the general intent of the chapter in the public health, safety, and welfare. So if a deviation improves public safety, that would be a criteria met. I'm pointing this out only for the benefit of the public because I understand, I'm a government attorney, I'm a land use attorney, the planners here and the applicant staff all know the standards, the board is aware of the standards. But I do not expect that the general public, who have concerns about a project going in next to their neighborhood, necessarily understand what is considered relevant for consideration and what is not. I'm not suggesting that stormwater or other issues are not relevant, but the comments should be, if they wish to be considered by the board, directed towards issues that are before this board to be considered. This board is not acquiring property, it is not in charge of city consultants working on other stormwater projects, and therefore, what the chairman has been trying to ask everyone to do is to focus their questions to the issues at hand, so...
Yeah, I would ask that the comments be directed to Mr. Rooney's comments and if...
I have a question for Mr. Rooney.
Yeah.
The 15 deviations that we saw tonight, roughly speaking, Mike, 15?
14, yep.
14. Did each of those address one of the rezoning points you just made? Did you find any that...
Staff went through each of the deviations and each one had a separate consideration addressing those two points.
That each one specifically was addressing a point in the rezoning questions before?
It was, understand that when you're doing a, when you're doing a planned development, you are asking for a mix of uses and generally a set of deviations from the standard development code. That is why it is a planned, a customized zoning category. So each deviation must be reviewed in consistency with, is it furthering some goal of either the planned development, or is it adding some additional public benefit? So if there was a deviation that said, stormwater system shall be designed to 15%, but this project gives 40% because it does something else, then that would be a deviation in furtherance of some public good.
Thank you.
So that's the considerations.
So let's limit the comments to those points raised and not worry about peripheral issues at this point. Proceed.
Very good. My name is William Clark. I live at 10301 Wood Ibis Ave. Our family's been there for 28 years, and we've seen it when it was a golf course, we've seen it when it's a closed golf course, we've seen it as the stormwater facility that it is right now. I look out every day and I get to see the drainage ditch that will be filled in. So, sticking with your point and making sure that I'm sticking with this, one of the things is that they want to fill in some of the drainage. When it comes back and we start looking at drainage and stormwater, we, their presentation made a statement that the golf course took all of the stormwater. Well, okay, it did. Now you're going to fill in the drainage ditch. You're going to take what was a 50-foot by zoning that was approved by the city less than two years ago, and we're going to make 15, they've asked for 15, they're going to get, I guess, 12, 13 deviations from zoning that's less than two years old. When we look at this, we're going back and we're trying to figure out, okay, we're putting in new stormwater system. With the new stormwater system, we're going to take out a partially obstructed 24-inch pipe, put in two 50-inch pipes. Who's going to pay for that? Who's going to do the O and M? Where's the O and M plan that would have gone with the engineering plan? We don't have that yet. You're going to tell, no, I know you're going to tell me that we don't have that yet, but we are looking at something that's going to take and have an effect on us. It's a public safety piece. It's a, it comes back. It is part of the deviations themselves. You cannot take and approve them if they're going to have a negative effect. When you go back and you look at the, at the, under your Section 4, what is it, Section 4/5 XX, subsection D, subsection, sub subsection 13, bona fide need for deviation and agree to provide, and agree to provide significant enhancement to the subject property in exchange for the deviation. Where are those bona fide, where's the, where's the plus for us as a butters to this? We don't see that. You're saying, okay, we put in 50 feet, now it's going to be 25 feet. That's not giving me something, that's taking something away. The stormwater that comes from the street comes across my property, goes into that drainage ditch, that drainage ditch is gone. Something's got to stop. You're taking and building up the golf course, and as you build up the golf course, where's that water going? We don't have a plan to show that this is going to work. We don't know that there's an O and M plan because there's never been one. There should be. The city fell down and didn't do their job by making sure that the systems work. Does the city maintain the outfalls now? No. Do we have faith that they're going to maintain them in the future? Not at this point.
Okay, I hear you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Zach Gillo. I live 24961 Carnoustie Court as well. This is my first one of these deals. I don't know all of the, I don't know if I'm going to be on point or not, but I can just say that being in the community, hearing the conversations, trying to be as involved as I can in this process or these conversations, I do understand that the city had a plan to work with developers to redevelop a golf course. I fully respect their right to buy the property and do something valuable with it for themselves. But some of these deviations, specifically deviation seven, going from 50 feet, again, that everybody agreed on two years ago, down to 25 feet, that's not even the length of this room. This is maybe 30 feet. I mean, we're talking a very, a very short window of space between what we already said was fair to the redevelopment process and trying to do something for the, not the greater good of the community, it's for Barron Collier. And I respect your reputation and everything that you're proposing to do, but off Carnoustie, we're going to go from having a waterfront view with egrets, the blue herons, we didn't talk about the otters, the minks. I mean, I've seen it all out there. And we're going to lose a lot of that because we're going to try and maximize the homes that they can put in there, in that little plot of land. If we don't approve that deviation, there's a chance that we might not have to worry about losing that lake and not having to go from being one of the only streets that has a waterfront view to one of the only streets that doesn't have a waterfront view. So please, don't approve deviation seven. Don't let them take that buffer away from us that we just talked about creating two years ago. Thank you.
Evening. I'm Kevin Taylor, Gulf Villas, Bonita Springs. A lot of our residents, their biggest issue is this whole drainage thing. And just want to make a point that we're doing the best we can to make this better than what we have now. Right now, the drainage is terrible. But another issue was on staff's conditions of monitoring the roads. I didn't see anything about Cocker Shell being monitored. Because right now, we have a lot of traffic that goes automatics from the northern part of Paradise, and they go down to Cocker Shell because Paradise is a terrible road as it is. So if you don't monitor Cocker Shell along with Paradise, you're not getting the right numbers, so that's it.
Does Cocker Shell connect to Shangri-La?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, Sharon Paney, 10400 Marlin Lane, Paradise Acres. And one thing I just want to say is that Paradise Acres is still being developed, and there's still a lot of empty lots there. So obviously, that water's going to go into somewhere. And also, in the last week, I've seen two fire trucks going down Paradise Acres, I'm sorry, Paradise Road, yes, Paradise Road. And we've actually had to get over almost onto the sidewalk so that the fire trucks could pass. So take that into consideration. Thank you.
Well, that's an issue to be addressed by Traffic Month.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mary Pirro, on the east side of Carnoustie Court, 24731. We've lived there for 30 years, and allowing a 25-foot buffer doesn't cut it. It's not fair. Two years ago, the city, when they passed the rules and regulations regarding golf course conversion, agreed to preserve the property values of the existing residents when and if the golf course was developed. And that's all we're asking you to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Grant Lundberg, and I live at 25174 Gulf Lake Circle, which is almost going to be an island in between where we were, golf course. But I wish to thank everybody, you members, everybody here. I remember almost 12 years ago, standing right up here, asking the city to buy the city golf course and to put it into a golf course. And we got voted out down only once, twice, three, four times. We had a meeting here one night, 1,400 people showed up here, they towed the cars out of the post office because they were trying to deliver mail at 9 o'clock at night. And this is what I see here now, you know, where is everybody at? I know what their concerns are, but at the same time, we tried for years and years, and as Ben, he's been on our committee, but what I want to say, I'm happy the way things are going right now because we tried to get it a park and everything. And everything that's happened has happened to a certain extent. And it's all I can say is thank you very much, and I hope they can continue working the way they want to do with our building. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very, very much.
I have a PowerPoint.
You, I'm sorry?
Sir, I have a PowerPoint to show.
A PowerPoint? Okay.
Here it is.
If you can limit it to five minutes, please.
Yes, just pictures. Thank you. What is it?
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate you taking time to listen. I'm Lori Wallace, and I live off of Wood Ibis. I've been there for 23 years. So I'm showing you a PowerPoint of pictures. So I want you to see what we, what we're dealing with as far as stormwater. And this goes along with deviation 14, which is the stormwater. Because you all said that the stormwater, the drainage plan is a moving target. It has not been worked. But this is before Irma, the flooding on Wood Ibis. This works. This is more Wood Ibis.
Oh, you found it, okay.
I think, yeah, I think it's, it shows you the flooding issues on Wood Ibis. This is prior to Hurricane Irma. Okay, this is Hurricane Irma. This is Wood Ibis. We have waterfront property. No value in that. This happens to be my house with the waterfront property. I had to put up a no-wake zone. As you can see, the water was all the way up to my garage, and the trucks didn't slow down when they went back to the back. This is the golf course bar. This is Divot. That's how deep the water is on Divot back there at the end of Wood Ibis. And I've been there for 23 years, and I've never seen this kind of flooding, even with any of the hurricanes prior. This is Cocker Shell. There's Paradise. There is Paradise and Wood Ibis. There was a lake on that corner. There's the clubhouse. There's more of Wood Ibis. You can see the cars, and that's part of the front yard, the top of Wood Ibis. This is in September 2020. It's not even a hurricane, just regular old Florida storms. You can see how there's no maintenance of any of the ditches, all the water is backed up.
So if they raise the grade in the new development, probably both sides get affected, is that correct?
So that was my point. The elevation will be increased, so all the water will be moving along towards Wood Ibis. You know, I know Barron Collier will take care of the water, stormwater on their properties and adjacent, but since the high school was built, we've had nothing but flooding. So I'm asking for the zoning board to wait for more information, wait for the data to show us, and what is the final drainage plan? Approving a development pending further information is poor planning and not a viable solution to the problem. There's no recourse to fix these problems if it's not done correctly. So let's do it right the first time. We know Barron Collier is an incredible developer. They do a great job, but face it, after a five-year build-out, they're gone, and we're all left. And it's our neighborhood... And it's our neighborhood, and we're going to deal with the problems. So please, think about this and take your time when you make the vote. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
What's, what's your name, please? All right, can I hear your name?
Sorry, Lori Wallace.
Thank you, Lori.
And I'm on Wood Ibis.
Yep.
Okay, my, my name is Iggy Heger. I own a place on 2551 Fennel Circle. And in the plan, there is a food and beverage area planned just in front of our house, and I wanted to know, what is that? Does it mean we have a lot of smelling, we have a lot of noise, we have toilets in front of our house during this construction, or what, what is that?
I just ask the applicant to respond to that.
Yeah, yeah. The applicant will respond to that. When he has an opportunity, the applicant will, will answer that question, what, what they intend to put there.
Not, not right now. It's not, it's not, this is not a question and answer period. This is, make your comments. If you have additional comments, make them now. At the conclusion of this process, the applicant will come up and, and
Yeah, not right now.
Be requested to answer those questions.
Yes, yes, yes. Understood. Well?
If I may, and Derek, if I go afield, I know you'll tell me, you'll give me a shake of the head. In just hearing about, and I lived through 2017, we all know what happened. I don't know if Mr. Waters is here, but when you have a chance to respond, the conditions that existed in 2017 with this project, can someone give me a comparison? For example, if what happened in 2017 with all the flooding and all of the various streets and areas that never flooded before, say you use that as a zero point, and we are now several years later with an awful lot of plans on paper. If those plans get implemented, could someone give me a number as to what the rate of improvement would be from what existed to what is currently planned? Just a rough idea, the improvement that would be if the changes that are on these papers are implemented. And if they can't be answered now, then I would hope that the applicant will respond.
No, I would just say, if, if Dr. Hersonson, if you're looking for answers from the, from the applicant, and I know there are other board members who have questions that are pending, I would go ahead and close the public hearing and then ask them to come up. And if they can't answer those questions, ask staff to answer those questions.
Sure, that's fine.
Okay. Any more comments from the public? Okay. Then I guess the best thing to do now is, is, is to hear from
The applicant.
From the applicant? If, if, if they can respond to some of the issues raised, particularly with respect to stormwater runoff?
Yeah, can we begin with the public comments response first, and then, and then to the board?
Good evening. My name is Neil Montgomery, for the record, and I think, I would beg your indulgence for like five minutes till we can get organized, so we don't have different people popping up, and make sure we can efficiently answer the questions. Is that okay?
I'm sorry, I'm missing something.
Okay. I represent the applicant, and there's been a broad array of questions.
Right.
So we want to, I'd like to ask for a five-minute break, so we can get organized.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
So we can properly respond.
Yeah, I, yeah, I have no problem with that whatsoever.
Okay.
Please. And just, just let us know when you're ready.
Mr. Chairman, maybe, maybe perhaps to, to help make this more efficient, could each of the board members, if they have any questions that they've been waiting on, ask those questions now, so the staff can, or so the applicant and the staff can respond.
That would be super helpful.
Go in their little conference, they can address those issues.
Correct.
One with me.
I, I know we had a question.
Mine are, mine are
I'm right on the line with Ben.
Yeah, I asked a question. Essentially, what existed, what existed during the flood of 17? What ex, okay.
Yeah, just wait a second for them.
Okay, gotcha. I have to wait.
What you're saying, you, you want us to tell you what this, how this is going to remediate what happened in 2017?
Yeah, the question is on qualification.
I have my whistle. What am I doing?
Let them tell us. They're the ones.
The system's broken now.
Yeah, exactly. If it's not going to, I know it's not just going to be the same old thing. You can't
I have a slightly different
Well, again
Please, you have the right to ask them. One day, one day we can meet.
We've got to have an opportunity.
Are we going to have
Yeah, there, there. There are many issues.
We're not taking a break. Are, are we ready? Oh, hold on a second, we have a video problem.
We're ready.
They are caucuses.
Tony, I'm going to run and come right back.
Please.
Yeah. I can't get
What is the purpose of the buffer? Prevent water from flowing into the property? Privacy, yeah, which is a different issue.
All right, guys. Let's go ahead, let's go ahead and ask the questions. The, the video is cutting out, but they're still recording, so it'll get broadcast.
Okay, well, whoever has questions?
Is that me?
Yeah, please. Mrs. Waterhouse has a question.
Yes.
Okay. To whom?
I guess to the applicant.
Yes, please.
Or the city, either one. What I was curious about, we had that one-colored map that showed the certain developments that did flow into the golf course, and that that was the intention. So I guess what my question is, that with this development, we're talking about some kind of mitigation and improvement in the stormwater. So is this only related to those developments that flow into the golf course, or, and I'm not sure if the people that live on Ibis Wood and Divot, for example, if their, their properties are intended to flow into the golf course, I'm not sure what those, how those developments fit in, or if they're surrounding properties. So I guess the situation, a little bit like what Mr. Hersonson is saying, is, as a result of this project, I was under the impression that there was going to be some kind of improvement to the stormwater management. And I guess, how much is that improvement, and what is left out there that potentially is not being addressed by this project? That maybe these folks in the room are concerned about?
Any other?
Response?
No, no, no. Let, they're, they're, they're seeking to get the questions, so they can have the right people answer the questions.
Next, any other questions?
I, I have one. The, it seems to be the, the reduction, and I understand, reading the papers, why it was done, but the reduction from 50-foot buffer to 25, and that needs to be fleshed out a little bit more, so that people can either have a better understanding of what they may not understand, or it may go some other direction. But I think at this particular point, that seems to be the most contentious issue that people have raised.
Anything else?
I just have a question combined with a statement. Obviously, the, we're trying to improve the stormwater system as a whole, to reduce flooding as a whole. And, and the property in question that we're looking at is an important piece of, of that system. But it, but the way in which this property interacts with other portions of the system need to be understood as well. What, for instance, as an example, we talked earlier about a stormwater pump that was the only access for stormwater. Did that pump pump 100 gallons a minute? Did it pump 1,000 gallons a minute? What's going to be the size of the new pump? Is there going to be a new pump? Is it going to pump more than the old pump? What's the impact on the downstream properties in the receiving waters that take this water at a higher rate? Are we increasing the permitted discharge? Are we going to raise the level of water in the downstream areas? How are those properties affected? How does all of this fit within the FEMA 100-year floodplain? Are, are we changing the, the prop, the boundaries for where the 100-year floodplain exists in any way? Are we seeing improvement? Going to another question was asked earlier, how many acre-feet of storage are we increasing by expanding the ponds and the lakes? What are, what are, let's quantify the benefits, and let's also quantify the, the potential impacts that are being offset by some of these benefits. A gallon of water does not disappear. It can be moved from one place to another, but it, an improvement in one area may impact somebody in another area, and we need to understand that, I think. And I think the public needs to understand that, so that we understand how the system is going to work, and not just how the improvements may be made in one small part of the system.
Aren't those points that will be discussed at the development stage when the final plans are laid?
That, that's an answer for the applicant to, to provide.
Well, I just asked a question.
And I want to add one more
Coming to a question.
One more little one, please. While I think the stormwater questions are by far the most important, I'm bothered some with traffic monitoring. One of the things you were reading, Derek, was, we need, we need to make sure that what we're proposing in the zoning rechange doesn't present undue burden on the existing system. And I don't see that we've got any traffic monitoring numbers at all, and I'm not so concerned about traffic on Paradise, good people, and, and Cocker Shell, but Shangri-La. It's, it's, what's it going to do to the, to traffic on Shangri-La? Which is very minor compared to stormwater issues.
I have one question.
Yeah, I have a question on the storm, excuse me, the stormwater elevation. If, if the elevation isn't sufficient to
This is, sir, 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 the, the, the public comment is over. This is, these are questions the board are asking.
Well, I'm a taxpayer. Can I say something?
There was an opportunity for public comment earlier.
Well, I didn't realize you were under this phase. Excuse me. But can I just ask my question?
Ask the chair.
Or they don't want to take it?
You had your opportunity, sir. I'm very sorry.
Does this mean that if the elevation isn't sufficient, that they have the ability to raise
You, you don't have the standing to ask that question, please. I laid out the rules at the beginning.
I think that's ridiculous. Thank you.
Take Mr. Gallois.
Bruce. My question is, in the material that you handed out to us, that the staff prepared, quote, "The city is prioritizing flood control for an area-wide public drainage system above all other criteria." You're going to have to convince me that you meet the requirements for rezoning, all these requirements, and I have four or five that I don't think you meet, without having that plan, without having the area-wide drainage plan, which affects everything. It affects the height or the depth of the, the lakes, it affects the slope of the, of the setbacks, it affects the width of the setbacks, it affects the, whatever contaminants are in the water. We don't know any of that. And I don't have, I can't find a basis for approving the rezoning without that information. It's like you gave me a plan without a boundary, or gave me a plan without a topo map. You're giving me a plan without the key criteria that you maintain is the key criteria, the stormwater management plan. I don't have it, I don't see it. So you have to convince me that I can, I can approve this rezoning without seeing what I consider to be the single most important piece of information. Thank you.
And my, my question, well, has been asked several times around the room. So anyhow, I think it's been kind of hit on in different ways and different areas, so.
Thank you, Ross. Anything else?
The applicant is asking for 10 minutes to prepare their responses, those questions.
Proceed. We have a lovely lady speaking to us.
Good evening. Thank you. We appreciate the time that you gave us. Again, for the record, my name is Neil Montgomery. Before we provide our response, I do want to point to some language that's on page one of your staff report, and that says, "By this reference, the applicant's application in its entirety and correspondence is made part of the record and is available." That's important, because I know Mr. Rooney has told you that in order to meet the zoning criteria, it's based on competent substantial evidence, not fears or thoughts or concerns. It's based on competent substantial evidence. So I don't know how many of you decided to print that. It's about this thick of the information. There you go. Thank you for validating that. All of that information is part of the competent substantial evidence, is part of the record. So, and in there is the traffic impact statement. And I know you had a question about traffic, and so we're going to ask Norman Trubilcock to come up and sort of give you a synopsis of what's in his complete traffic impact statement that's been reviewed and accepted by the city.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Norman Trubilcock. I'm a professional engineer and certified planner. I've been in the area since 1990, over 32 years of experience in the area with traffic analysis. As Neil had mentioned, the TIS is in your package. This was reviewed by a professional engineer from the, from the city as well. In, in the traffic study, we covered the trip generation, the trips we generate, we looked at a distribution and assignment of traffic, background traffic. That traffic data is gathered by the city, and we utilize that, so it's objective data. We look at the future road network, we look at the impacts, we do what's called a link analysis, to look at the capacity of the roadway segments that are there, too. We look at site access, turn lane analysis, improvement analysis, and mitigation of impact. So that is the traffic impact statement that we prepared, your staff reviewed, we created initially a methodology to cover some of the assumptions that we make. It gets reviewed by the professionals as well. One of the items that came up regarding was Cocker Shell, Paradise, and Shangri-La. Those are monitored roadways. You do monitor those roadways. The key is, is there was some additional monitoring that staff felt was necessary at a particular intersection, and we've agreed to do that monitoring with your staff. So that, that's really the key issue. But you guys do monitor a lot of these road segments for the, the sake of the audience to understand as well. Based on the link analysis that was performed, there is adequate and sufficient roadway capacity on the, on the segments that are of called significant impact by the project. And we mitigate those impacts overall with the payment of impact fees for the project as well. So if there's any other questions, I'd be, be available to answer.
Where's the additional monitoring asked for, Mike?
Okay, so
Norman or Mike? Where's the additional monitoring asked for and why?
The intersection of Shangri-La and Paradise, that particular intersection itself, just because there, there, the amount of traffic that is there. And so it's just, wanted to look at more detail of it versus the segments of road are looked at, but we want to look at the turning movements to see if, what improvements may need to be, be there in the future.
But that's one of the monitoring points now, you said?
No.
Cocker Shell and Shangri-La, and Paradise and Shangri-La were monitored now?
So those are what we do. You, you monitor the segment of roads, so you monitor the traffic, you know, going in each direction. At the actual intersection, what we look at is turning movements themselves, the actual turning movements. And then, so then we can look at a more detailed analysis of the intersection itself, not just the segment of roadway.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you.
And when we looked through all the questions that people had, the rest of the questions, they broke down into two major categories. One is Deviation 7, and the other is the drainage questions. I do want to state, and I know you know this, but at zoning, particularly for this type of development, we're looking at, are we going to be the same or better than the existing system? We have, I believe, by the city's testimony and by our expert testimony, demonstrated that we're better. What we're doing here is going over and above and beyond what the land development code requires, but this isn't the end of the journey. You still have to go through the staff at the time of DO. You still have to go through South Florida Management District in order to get an ERP. The public can and often does comment and review that process. They can put their names in, you know, and follow that application along. So this, this is just the beginning of the journey. This isn't the end of the journey. I personally have been on calls with Sing Hoffman, and Mr. Waters will explain this further. The question you had is, did they look beyond those colors? Yes. Because every time we had a meeting, we lost more land, so eyes, the attorney, got really nervous. But they wanted to make sure there weren't downstream impacts. They looked at everything that's around, they wanted to make sure there were upstream impacts. And so when they do their modeling, all those things were considered and taken into account. So Mr. Waters can talk about it from our perspective, but the city also is in control of their expert. We were in a position of accepting We were in a position of accepting the city's experts' directions on this. So, I, that, so not every question that you have could we answer because it's in the control of the city who, to some degree, is driving this. With that, Mr. Waters.
So, tried to, as, as the questions came out, jot down what they were, and want to kind of walk through, provide more information on what the plan is, and try and answer those questions as best we can. If there are additional questions, obviously, I'll answer them to the degree I can. First thing I want to talk about is the, the former, formerly permitted system, the existing golf course, was a system that had a pump station there. The pump station currently sits there. It's in disrepair. It doesn't work. It hasn't worked for years. The pump station previously was permitted for a pump with a rate of 20,000 gallons per minute. So, you know, that may not mean a whole lot to you. What that is, is basically equivalent to about 20 fire hydrants. You get about 1,000 gallons a minute out of a fire hydrant. So, you basically have a pump that could shoot about 20 fire hydrants worth of flow across Cockle Shell Drive, through the pipes under Cockle Shell, into Spring Creek.
In a minute?
In a minute. 20,000 gallons per minute. So, it'd be like 20 fire hydrants there. And that was how it was originally designed, again, but the issue is, the original design, it's manually operated. It required the golf course to operate it. Nobody would permit that to us now and say, hey, you have a bunch of residential communities that surround this property, and it depends on somebody to go out there and flip a switch to operate the pump and get it out of there. Just, you know, again, it's one of these things that we've learned a lot in 40 years, and it's something that wouldn't get permitted now. The proposed system that we have, have worked with Sing Hoffman to establish what that land plan has to look like and what you see here tonight would be a gravity-fed system. And, you know, again, the guy that's supposed to go out and flip the pump station on, he could take a day off, he could be on vacation. Gravity's not taking a day off, takes no vacations. It will be a gravity system that does not require operation. Now, one of the things I would point out to you, and the reason we've got this original permit plan up, is you can see the amount of lake that was on here in the original permit plan, and then if I go forward to this, the proposed plan, there's significantly more, more lake there. The reason for that is, if we are not going to have a gravity system, which the current design with Sing Hoffman is to not be a gravity system, you need more storage area because it's relying on the height of the water to flow out. And so, it is, unless, if we're at a peak of a storm, we may approach those rates that we would have gotten with the pump station, but when it's small storm events, we wouldn't get to that rate. And so, because you're not going to get that constant flow out at that kind of rate, you need more area to store that water and hold it. The, you know, one of the things that, that Neil mentioned that I will add on to is, you know, to, to be talking at this level of detail about drainage in a zoning issue is, is fairly unique, and there's a lot unique about this, and I understand why we're talking to this degree, because it is such a problem. But what will happen is, once we get to a place where, so there's basically two things. We have been working very closely with the city's consultant, Sing Hoffman, and that is the result of, of all that coordination is the plan that you see on the screen that is what is proposed. So, the city's consultant has, has run these, the models, and identified what the impact and what the improvements you would see from this proposed system is. So, you know, we are all in agreement that what's there now, it doesn't work. And, you know, in, in places like, when we're talking about specifically Benita Golf Villas, which is the area with Wood Ibis and Divot Drive and those areas, I, I can tell you, when we got into this, we immediately started researching the permit history and trying to figure out why are there problems? If you go back to the Water Management District's files from, I want to say it's 1981, there was already flooding in, in those areas. It never worked right. And part of what, you know, we are in partnership with the city trying to do is to get this fixed. You know, what is there is not working. And again, if you go back 40, it, it hasn't worked for 40 years. There were lawsuits, the sheriff was called, trespass issues. It's all in the Water Management District's permit file. It has never worked. And what we are partnering with the city to do is to build a system that will work. One of the things I, I would kind of point you to, and I mentioned it in one of the breaks when we talked to one of the neighbors here, is so before I worked here at Peninsula Engineering, I worked at South Florida Water Management District. And one of the real trouble areas that everybody knew within this area was Shangri-La Road. And whenever there was a bad storm, Shangri-La flooded, and it was terrible. And it was bad enough that there was an inspector at the Water Management District, Steve Nagel. People had signs up with Steve's cell phone number and says, hey, if you don't like how it is, call Steve Nagel and ask him to fix it. The city went in and they did an improvement project on Shangri-La. Just talked to the city staff with Matt Feeney as we worked on this. I said, hey, how did Shangri-La do after Hurricane Irma? No complaints. It worked great. But the key is, I, I would look at the Benita Golf Villas area very similar to Shangri-La. We have to get the water from the roads, from people's yards, to the outlet, to where it needs to go, and that's not happening right now. And a lot of that will be work that we do on the golf course. There may be work that's required, actually, I'm, I'm certain there's going to be work that's going to be required within Benita Golf Villas that the city will have to do to connect that system up. The, so, you know, when we, basically, when we get to a, a place where we know what our plan is, and that's really what this is. This is to identify and go through the city process and say, what is the plan we can build? Once we get to a place where we know what that plan is, we will go to the Water Management District and all of the things that you're concerned with, which is, does it flood anybody downstream? Does it protect the adjacent property owners? All that gets looked at in a very detailed sense in that Water Management District permit review. Now, I can tell you, this is, again, it's, it's unique in this case, and Neil mentioned it, in that Sing Hoffman is doing that work on behalf of the city. And so, Sing Hoffman is looking at, what are the impacts of installing this system and what benefits does it provide? You know, the, one of Mr. Herschelson's question is, what's the reduction in flooding if we do this? I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know what the number is, but what I can tell you is, the pictures that you saw from Wood Ibis and those areas would not happen if you had a functioning system. You know, they are, the design that we are working with Sing Hoffman on that led us to this plan and will include significant conveyance improvements specifically for the Benita Golf Villas property on the south property line of the north golf course parcel would alleviate that flooding, and it wouldn't occur. So, you know, Neil mentioned the, what the minimum standards are in the golf course conversion standards, and then also what the standards are of the Water Management District, which is essentially do no harm. You know, it is not the, the obligation of somebody coming in to make anything better, it's just we can't make it worse. In this case, you know, we are partnering with the city to legitimately make this better. One of the questions that came up was, you know, is this regional facility serving only these areas you see in the colored shades here, or is it serving a larger area? What I would tell you is, it is, number one, it's serving a larger area. So, one of the things that, that, you know, a couple of the areas that are outside of these shaded areas that will be improved if this plan goes forward. I don't know exactly what the name of the community is, but on the east side of Paradise Road, basically on the, yeah, excellent. So, this is an area that's subject to flooding currently. All of its runoff has to go south down Paradise Road to get to Shangri-La, to go west to the bay. Part of what is planned in Sing Hoffman's design is to bring water in down here, here, and here, and drain those areas instead of making them go down those narrow swales that go south towards Shangri-La. And, and one of the, you know, one of the things I talked about before is, we have to build resiliency into this design. If you drive down Paradise Road right now and you look at that system, it's maybe an eight-foot wide swale, if that. Every driveway on Paradise Road has a, basically, the driveway goes over top of the swale, it's culverted, and all it takes is, one, two people to say, I'm tired of looking at that pipe bend in my driveway, I'm going to plant some bushes there so I don't have to see this. Everybody behind that is backed up and has issues. This, by taking that water into these open water bodies and the lakes, will alleviate that. It will provide a consistent and good outfall that will deal with that. In terms of, and I apologize, I know I'm bouncing around a little bit, but I'm trying to catch all of the, the issues that were raised. In terms of the maintenance plan and who's going to maintain things, the intent would be that the Developers Homeowner Association would maintain the things that are specific to this development. So, basically, the ponds that are within, you know, that are specific to the development, the pipes within the private rights of way, the outfall pipes where the development outfalls into the backbone system that would be constructed. Everything else would be maintained by the city, is the intent, and the city would be granted drainage easements over those facilities. Again, that was something we talked about earlier. One of the issues you have right now out here is, if the city said, we want to go out here and clean a pipe, clean a ditch, they don't have a legal right to. If one of these homeowners associations that is adjacent to this site says, we want to go in there and clean the ditch, they don't have a legal right to. And we need to remedy that, and that's part of this plan, is we would, as part of the platting process, when we get to a development order, we would record drainage easements, we would identify who the responsible party is. For anything off-site, it would be the city. And we would dedicate those easements to the city and give them right of access to do that. A couple of other points, and then, you know, anything I haven't addressed, I'm happy to answer questions on. The, one of the things that has been said is, and this is, you know, is typical in a lot of redevelopments, which is basically, hey, the new guy is going to come in and they're going to fill much, much higher than everybody else. That's not going to be the case here. We'll obviously build this, build our homes and our roads to whatever the latest standards are, but this is not a case where we will have a separate water management system where we will store water higher and build our site up to be much higher than everybody else, and everybody else is at a separate elevation. This will be a shared system. When you look at this, you know, you can see basically the, the rear yards of these will outfall into that lake. The same water levels that surrounding residents adjacent to us experience, that would be what we experience. And so, we, it will be a, a common, once we do, I, I will preface, once we do our own water quality treatment in these ponds that you see here, after that, it'll be a shared water management system, and whatever the flood level is within those ponds, we will all experience it together. We will not be separated. See what else I have.
Don't forget deviation seven.
Oh, I know. That's, yeah, that's my big finish.
Let me ask the board if they have any other issues that you might not have addressed.
And, and so, one other I wanted to throw out, sir, if I could. Deviation seven, which is related to the buffer widths.
Buffers, yeah.
Yes. So, you know, as Wayne indicated in his presentation, you know, we have worked a lot with the city and the city's consultant to get to this plan. And some of that is, you know, the, what we have come to find is, you know, we need a lot of storage area on this. That's the answer. I think somebody said earlier, you know, a gallon is a gallon, it's not going to disappear. Well, to really make this an efficient system that works, you need large contiguous areas of storage for a couple of reasons. One, then we don't have these things that are connected with pipes that could potentially clog, and we have issues upstream, but also we're efficiently using the land and storing the water in these large storage areas. So, what that has, has basically led us to is, the needs for this regional water management were so great that basically, it put us in a place where, you know, we had to concentrate development in certain areas so that we could preserve those large areas to do the greater good, which is to fix the stormwater issues. And so, there are, you know, I don't disagree that there are a lot of competing interests on this, but basically, you know, anything where if we tried to make buffers bigger in certain areas, that would mean we would lose the ability to develop in those areas. To make this viable, we would have to add development somewhere else, which would mean you would lose lake area. And so, it, it becomes a zero-sum game of, of what the most important items are. The one other thing I would throw out and point out to you, too, in terms of, there were questions about what does this do in terms of FEMA and flood elevations and things like that. The thing I would point out would be, these areas where you're seeing the, the ponds, this is, and to, to further indicate just how these are issues of conveyance, believe it or not, if you go to the FEMA maps and look at the FEMA maps, it says this whole property is in what they call zone X, which is an area that is not at risk in a 100-year flood. And the, the area is actually about four feet above the water table, most of the golf course, which is, is fairly unique. You know, a lot of these native sites that we work on, they tend to be six inches, a foot above the groundwater table. They're fairly low. This is up high. And so, everywhere where you see these ponds, where we're going to scrape down, it's going to create about four feet of flood storage that was not there before. And that really is the intent, particularly moving away from a pumped system. The intent is scrape those areas down, create that storage, so that basically we have a place to store this water instead of the roads and instead of people's homes and things like that. One other item I will throw out, just because we didn't really touch on it, but this, again, goes back and forth to the amount of, of work we did with Sing Hoffman to try and, and come up with a plan that satisfies these regional needs and also satisfies the, you know, the ability to develop this viably. You can see there actually was, this is the old golf course maintenance facility site up here. And so, one of the things that Sing Hoffman has worked into their plan in order to ensure that we do not have an adverse impact on the downstream water bodies here, one of the things Sing Hoffman worked into their plan is to take that old maintenance facility site, scrape that down, create storage, that provides storage for, basically for the neighboring properties, particularly San Carlos Estates Water Control District, and it, it allows us to, to move forward with this plan. So, you know, this has been looked at a tremendous number of ways. We spent a lot of time with Sing Hoffman to come up with what the best plan was, and we think we have it. So, you know, happy to answer any questions. I tried to hit on everything that came up, but if there's something I didn't address, I'll be happy to answer it.
So, you're saying the 50-foot buffer, what you're saying is you, you narrowed that down to 25-foot because that's some of the issues that people are having? Is that what I'm hearing? Because of water? Because you're saying, you know, you want to use that extra space for the water flow?
No, it's, it's not necessarily for water flow. It's really, you know, we have to make this a viable development project for it to go forward. And so, if it's going to be a project that satisfies both the regional stormwater needs and, you know, something that is marketable and developable, there has to be some give in terms of these things. And I guess my point would be, if you start saying, and, oh, sure, if we could have come up with a development plan where we kept the 50-foot buffers and it was something viable, we absolutely would have done it. It's just, if you start to lose development density in these areas where we're going from 50 to 25, in those cases, then Nick always describes it like a balloon. You push in one point, and if we start pushing in and taking another 25 feet in some of these areas, you're going to lose units, and in order for this to be a viable development plan and get units back, it's going to have to encroach back out into this area, and then we lose the water management benefit. So, again, there are competing interests where, you know, we put a lot of time into this, we did listen, and we're trying to do the best we can, but it, it's just, it's difficult given the circumstances here.
I think, I think I just want to...
Let me ask you a question. You went through a long series of cross-sections, which basically achieved... You went through a long series of cross-sections, which basically achieved an opaque buffer when you have the 25 feet. You, you went through probably 10 of them. So, but, so from a compatibility standpoint and a buffer standpoint, they will be buffered?
Yes, they will be buffered. And I would also, one other thing I would throw out is, if you look at the, the standards for the golf course redevelopment, it allows a reduction, it allows an applicant to come in and do what we're doing, which is request a reduction in that buffer width. One of the things it says is, if you do come in and request that reduction in the buffer width, you have to do a 12-foot wide trail that is tree-lined. And, and our thought is, you know, as I expressed before, there's, to make this work, there is a need to reduce that buffer width. We don't think anybody would be thrilled if we said, okay, we're reducing the buffer width and we're putting a walkway in your backyard. And so, we think the better use is to screen that and landscape between the two and put the wall in and make the two uses compatible. One other thing that I'll throw out, too, just in closing, in, in terms of the deviations, is, I think what you have to keep in mind, too, is, and I kind of got here as I started, further along I got into looking at this, all of these standards were written based on an assumption that, all of these were written based on an assumption that the drainage systems in place work. And the reason we're asking for these deviations is, and you heard it from the public and we agree, the system doesn't work, and we need to make these changes to develop something that does indeed work. And that's why we're asking for all these things. It would be much easier for us if we weren't.
And, and just to be clear, what I, what we're, what I'm hearing you saying is, that system there is not, is going to help the surrounding communities also with their, all those pictures that we're seeing and different things of flooding, that system also will benefit the, the greater neighborhood?
That is absolutely right, yes. So, you know, basically, the, the, let me find my slide here. The bare minimum required in the code would be to say, take these areas that are in the colors, that were originally designed to come into the golf course system, and design something that doesn't make it any worse on them. Doesn't say you have to make it better, it just says, don't make it any worse on them. That's the bare minimum in the code. You know, we have decided, you know, not to bury our head in the sand and go, we're going to do the bare minimum. We're working with the city to try and do this the right way. You know, and one of the things was, we heard, again, I'll go back to in the first neighborhood information meeting, heard loud and clear that there are terrible problems here that need to be fixed, and, you know, we're trying to do that as best we can as a part of our development project.
Yeah, especially with the water.
Absolutely, yeah.
I have a question, and it's tied in with this, and I'm, perhaps if I'm jumping, then fine, but it's been a long evening. The issue that came up earlier, and I don't know, Dan, if you can be the one to speak to it, or maybe somebody else can, the question I have relative to the, the 50-foot setback relative to, you know, to another development, and the homes that are already existing. The bottom line is, for me, the way I see it, if that 25-foot goes back to 50, does it not change potentially the type of residents that are going to go in there? For example, and I, I'm not sure you can answer, this is probably Nick.
Yeah.
So, I'm going back to the fact that you can't have it both ways. What I'm trying to do is isolate the issues, listening to what people are talking about relative to that 25-foot from 50, well, the only option that I can come up with, I'm thinking, would be multifamily. Am I right or wrong on that?
Yes, sir. The interesting part of the process, we're on the third floor with the development team, and Dan's on the first floor, he's the engineering team. So, on, on almost every two-week basis, Dan would come up the elevator and go, Sing Hoffman asked for 15 more acres. And I'd go, okay, where are we going to squeeze that out of? Well, we'll squeeze it out of the south tract. I'm, I'm talking about the progression of units. Under the comp plan, there's 618 units that's allowed, we were in the 500 range, and, and almost for the period of, I would say, July till almost October, every couple weeks, he would call and say, met with Sing Hoffman, they want more land. And I'd go, Dan, that doesn't work. We're, we've already agreed with the community to, to give up the multifamily, but now we're going to give up the multifamily and more, and more property. So, it kept, that, that pinch kept happening to the point where, you know, you're at the version that you saw, you know, you can see it changing and progressing. All the way, that's, that's even, one that was even better, because if you look, there's a cul-de-sac on the south piece that goes to the right, and then you get to the version that's that. Not only was that south piece eliminated, but then the maintenance area came in. So, you can see that. Now, we did say, in talking to our team as we were talking, on the areas that there are 25 feet, we would agree to limit it to a single-story. That maybe will help mitigate this even a little bit more, so that if you reduce the buffer a little bit, we'd say, in those areas where it goes from 50 to 25, we'll only do single-story homes there, because I think that helps a lot versus in your backyards, looking in someone's window there versus the, the 50 feet that's there.
Let, let me ask you a question. Maybe I'm, I'm wrong, but I'm boiled all this down to buffers, buffers equal aesthetics.
Yes, sir.
That's the whole issue here, is it not? It is not a physical issue that water retention or water prevention, it's aesthetics.
Yes, yes, sir.
And I think you've been probably, what you've said, and the city had, the staffers agreed, that, that with your fence and you, and your, and your landscaping on the side that faces the, the other residences, you, you, you achieved that. That's my opinion.
We, we would enhance the buffer, and I, and I think I was adding that where it's 25-foot buffer, we go single-story, check step box even one more, so that you're not looking at a two-story product right there. So, we're willing to put that on the record. I, I will tell you, if on the north piece, you squeeze down 25 feet on both sides because you want the buffer to be 50, then the blue area in the south piece, like a balloon, as I mentioned, that Dan has to grow, and we get into this debate with the city, and, and I'm always a fan of visuals, right? If under the new code, the level of the table where Derek's sitting is the, as high as the water can go under the new code, that's what we would have to design our development to. If the existing community's standard right now is the height of where I'm standing, we're not required to make that lower by code. We're required to make, not make this any higher. So, we could say, hey, we're not doing this blue stuff, we've been working with you all summer, but this is becoming way out of hand for us. We will make sure it doesn't get any lower than this, than this level here. We'll design our development to that height, and we'll be okay. We don't want to do that, that doesn't make sense, because the first thing that's going to happen when it rains is, our phones are going to ring, it's going to look bad on everybody. So, we said, we'll, we'll blend down to that new level. Dan didn't design it, he said, submitted to Sing Hoffman, ran the model. Sing Hoffman came up with that version that you see up there, which lowers everything down. So, I think we're trying to do a give and take with you all, and we'll agree to that single-story. We, we can't reduce these, you know, expand these buffers without eliminating some blue somewhere and potentially going back to multifamily on the south side.
As far as I personally am concerned, the issue of buffers has been, has been answered adequately.
Sure. And, and one last answer to the gentleman we, we talked to in the back, there is no commercial uses on this site. There's a reference to food and beverage, but there is no commercial uses in the zoning. There is a clubhouse, it's not a staffed clubhouse, it's what you'd see as a typical pool. It's in the middle of the north tract, nothing on the south tract. So, I want to make sure I put that on the record to answer your question, that there were no beer and alcohol service to the public, not during construction, as you had asked, and certainly not open to the public the clubhouse. So, hopefully that helps a little bit, explain the process we went through over the summertime with the city staff.
Anything else, Mr. So-and-so, I forgot your name again.
Hi again, I'm Wayne Arnold, professional planner. And I just wanted to touch, I know a comment was made that they weren't certain that we met the findings for rezoning for plan development, and Mr. Fingon on pages 45 and 46 of your staff report went through that analysis very clearly. We performed that analysis, Mike had several slides, I, I did as well, but it, it's about 11 criteria talking about comp plan consistency, are the deviations appropriate? We believe we're consistent with your findings as conditioned, and I think, as Nick mentioned, too, the reduction to single-story units, if that's something you want to add as a condition where we have that reduced buffer, we're happy to do that as well, because we think that we're essentially single-family to single-family, and I know what the golf course regulations say, but if this wasn't the golf course, your code requires no buffer between single-family and single-family homes.
Just to confirm, you, you, the developer has agreed with all of the conditions imposed by the staff?
We have, assuming that you approve the condition that says we can continue to work on a couple of the deviations.
Yes, of course.
Yes, we are, we are in agreement. Thank you. Neil, do you want to say anything to close? We're happy to answer any other questions that the zoning board may have.
I'm also a professional planner.
Okay.
And understand rezonings thoroughly. I'm the one that asked the question. Convinced me that, that this plan, whatever this is, and you've convinced me now, rather than convincing me that this is the plan, you've convinced me that it's not the plan. You've shown me now three plans, we're here, here, to here. Is this the plan? The one I'm looking at-
This is your master concept plan that we're asking you to support.
This is the one I'm supposed to base, I understand the design process just like you do, okay? So, the design process you're going through right now, okay, in deciding setbacks and deciding spacing for houses and deciding, is based on this plan?
Yes.
And this plan is not going to change?
That plan is what we're asking you to approve tonight.
If Sing Hoffman comes back and says, I need 20 more lots, is it going to change?
Well, I, I think that, that's, I'll let Nick answer it, but sure, it, it may have to if they ask for something very significant, but they, they may ask for very minor adjustments, and we can still continue to live with the buffer conditions and deviations we've requested.
We, we've left a little room, because that park area that's in green, north of Maddox, is a little bit more space, and we do own that land just north of the park space that's there. That has become, sir, as, as planner, that becomes our contingency. If, if Sing Hoffman says, I need another acre, we've got a little room to give there. But all this blue plan is contingent on us working with the city on some sort of agreement down the road, because, as you can imagine, there's a lot of work that goes with building that, that public drainage system that's going forward. But to your point, yes, sir, put on the record, that plan that you see right there, we, we are committing to with what we put on the record tonight.
Any other questions? Any questions for the staff? Okay, then I guess at this time, I will entertain a motion. I would move that we approve the rezoning in accordance with the, with the conditions laid down by the city and approved by the developer. All in favor?
Need a second.
Need a second.
Hmm?
Need a second.
Oh, second, somebody second it, please.
I'll second it.
She seconded it. Favor?
Roll call, please.
Call the roll.
Linda Waterhouse?
Yay.
Gerald Benson?
Aye.
Ben Hirschenson?
Oh, he's deciding.
Yeah, skip me for a second, please, I, I just got to think something out.
Eric Ambrell?
Nay, and my reasoning is that this is just too much to absorb since Wednesday.
Russ Winn?
Yes, yes, aye.
Bruce Galloway?
No, and my reasoning is, I believe we're premature, and I would like to see this continued until we have more information about specifically what's going on with the, with the city's design and Baron Collier's response to all of this. I, I don't know what I'm, what I'm looking at, because it's, it's a shifting target. That's the way I feel.
Chairman Rasio?
Yes.
Ben Hirschenson?
I wish there was some more time to, to answer some of these other issues, but there isn't, I gather. I don't know where the vote is at this point. I'll, I'll vote yes, provided that, well, I can't qualify my yes, so it's a tough one for me, it really is. Dialogue will continue, am I right? That's just a general question. Dialogue continues between the, you know, beyond this.
As you, hadn't Mr. Castleguida pointed out, the, the proposal takes into a comp, into account the city's proposed designs. The city is still working with that design and how it's going to be funded, because it's not just the land being satisfied, it's the actual improvements. So, there, there are continuing discussions on that point.
And one more question, I know this is, I've never done this in my life, and God knows how many times I've given votes. There will be additional opportunities for, for community, I mean, I heard-
This is going, this is, this is going, any, any proposed partnerships or development plans would all have to go to the city council.
At which the public has a right to, to-
Correct.
Be heard. Thank you very much.
Okay, so it's not over here by any stretch of the word, there's still a lot of dialogue to come.
Witness weaks fish count.
Yeah, okay, then I, I'll, I'll vote yes.
And the result is?
Five-two.
Five-two.
Pass.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I didn't mean to do that.
And I want to wish, I want to thank the applicant and the-
Debbie, Debbie wants to do something. When you're done.
Oh, I just want to thank everybody for the very cogent and, and, and presentation, that's all. May I adjourn?
February 8th, next meeting, 9:00 a.m., is that okay with the board members?
Yep, I'm, I'm, I'm good.
February 8th, yeah.
Yeah, there's an email.
You already brought that, you already asked us, right?
There's an email.
Yes, gonna live with it.
Thank you.